We will now reconvene our regular meeting for the Lompoke City Council of Tuesday, May 18th, 2021. Roll call, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Ball?
Present.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Present.
Councilmember Cordova?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Victor Vega?
Here.
Mayor Janelle Osborne?
Here.
Before we begin, I want to make sure everyone in the back can hear, so give me a thumbs up if you can hear us in the back, great. And for those of you joining remotely, our streaming is down, so if you would like to listen in, KPEG 100.9 FM is the place to do it. I'm waiting to get clarification as to whether or not there is Comcast, but if our streaming is down, most likely Comcast Channel 23 is down. So we apologize for that. We're working on trying to solve that, but it may not happen during the meeting. Mr. Malave, report out from closed session, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The City Council met in closed session tonight with staff to discuss the one item on the agenda, a conference with labor negotiators regarding IBW. Staff made a presentation to council and council gave direction to staff on that item, but no reportable action was taken.
Thank you. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, to be followed by the invocation by Chaplain McClellan. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pastor McClellan?
Thank you, Mayor. Let's pray, please. Almighty God, Creator of all, thank you for the gift of life. Thank you that each and every life matters to you. Remind us that we are all created in your image and that each and every soul, each and every person, has value to you. Help us to honor your creation with respect, understanding, and compassion, and when possible, with tangible acts of kindness. Thank you for each member of this our elected city council, Mayor Osborne, Gilda Cordova, Victor Vega, Dirk Starbuck, and Jeremy Ball. We are thankful for our city manager, Jim Troop, our city department managers, and each and every individual employed by our city. We acknowledge them and thank them for their hard work and dedication during this past 14 months. I pray for each of tonight's staff who are presenting information and recommendation for council's consideration. May each presenter be confident in the work they have prepared and articulate in their presentations. Lord, we thank you. We are thankful that we live in a community where many volunteers, houses of worship, and community-based organizations have stepped up to distribute food, provide rides, assist with inoculations, and give support to so many in our community. We give special thanks to those who have been on the front lines during this past year of COVID, who have been putting their own health and safety on the line in service to others, our frontline health workers and caregivers, our police officers and fire personnel, and our essential business workers, and hundreds of volunteers who have donated their time and resources. And now, oh God, we pray for your wisdom and guidance as we collectively work to continue to overcome and mitigate the devastating effects of this pandemic. May our city council, our business leaders, and our community-based organizations and civic groups seek your counsel and your wisdom as our city begins to move towards a new normal. For those for whom this pandemic has been an inconvenience and even a major disruption to expected ways of how we educate, worship, travel, and interact with each other, may we, as we return to a new normal, not quickly forget individuals and businesses that have experienced great financial and personal difficulty, sickness, loss of life and livelihood, and those who have experienced extended isolation and mental health and relationship difficulties during this pandemic. Even as we are thankful for vaccines and fewer restrictions, there is still much ahead in our season of recovery. Give all who despair hope, purpose, and courage to move forward. Give them a spirit and a heart of resilience. May we continue to provide encouragement and tangible acts of support and care for each other and those less fortunate than ourselves. May this be a season of thinking outside the box, outside our respective silos, special interests, factions, and self-imposed rules that may hinder a meaningful economic and social recovery. May each segment of our community, including our city council, have the courage and vision to seek new opportunities for cooperation, coordination, collaboration, and communication between and amongst each other. May we acknowledge that we are better working together, and may we all seek ways of doing so. And finally, Almighty God, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community consistent with your purposes and worthy of your pleasure. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and love. And the people said, amen.
All right, I have a couple of proclamations this evening. Has anyone from Allen Hancock arrived? Yes, there's Dr. Walters. Come on down. So it gives me great honor to share with you that it is Allen Hancock College's centennial anniversary. So whereas Allen Hancock College has served as a critical contributor of accessible higher education to the community since its establishment as Santa Maria Junior College in 1920, and whereas Allen Hancock College has dedicated itself to opening doors to students from northern Santa Barbara County and beyond, who otherwise might not have the opportunity to attend college, and whereas Allen Hancock established the Hancock Promise Program in 2018, ensuring every high school graduate in the district receives their first year of college tuition-free, regardless of background, and whereas since its inaugural cohort in 2018, the Hancock Promise has served more than 4,000 students who will join the ranks of Hancock alumni, who have launched successful careers, become valuable community leaders, and embodied the college's logo slogan of "Start here, go anywhere." And whereas on May 22nd, 2021, Allen Hancock College will celebrate 100 years of serving the community and its significance for individuals and families, local businesses, and regional industries that rely on the quality and affordable education that has been offered since 1920. Now therefore I, Janelle Osborne, Mayor of the City of Lompoke, California, do hereby recognize May 22nd, 2021, as Allen Hancock College Day of Centennial Celebration and commend Allen Hancock College, the premier college of northern Santa Barbara County, for 100 years of dedication to providing quality higher education and commitment to changing the odds for students in our community. And thank you for showing that in 2020, you knew how to switch it up and continue to provide services to our community. We look forward to supporting you for another 100 years.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Osborne. Thank you, City Council. And it's been a great year at Hancock College, from an academic perspective and a celebration perspective, even though we've struggled with the remote nature of learning. But when you look at what Hancock College has done over the pandemic, we've put, including from our Lompoke Valley Center and our Santa Maria Center, we've put groceries in 450,000 cars over the course of the pandemic. For Santa Maria and Guadalupe, one in every three doses of vaccine was administered at Allen Hancock College. So our faculty, staff, and students are committed to changing the odds for our community. And what we mean by that is, rather than me coming to these kind of meetings and telling you great stories about students who are overcoming the odds, which I could do all night long, we want to remove those barriers and change the odds so that students have the same chance that most of us in this room had, to go to college and get good jobs. And we're making a lot of progress in that. So we're grateful for this. We hope everybody will tune in on May 22nd. You can go to allenhancock.edu/100, and you can sign up for the gala. It's free. It'll start streaming at 6:00. It'll also be on KEIT, a shortened version of it. It'll start running at 6:30. But we hope you'll join the streaming. It's a lot of fun. We're going to have 100 years of music. We have a lot of great musicians, Louis Ortega, Grammy Award winner is going to be there, Pryor &amp; Lee. Some of you may know Pryor Baird from The Voice, Yusuf Severs from our PCPA, and we'll also have the lead singer from Toad the Wet Sprocket. So kind of a nice little list of musicians, and we're grateful for all the support of Lompoke, and we're happy to be part of this community. So thank you.
Is someone with the Public Works Department here this evening to accept their proclamation? I see you coming on up. So this is National Public Works Week, May 16th to the 23rd of 2021. Thank you, Craig. This is Craig Dearling, who is in our Public Works Department. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Lompoke. Whereas these infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public work professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities that are essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest of the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Lompoke to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public work programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2021 marks the 61st Annual National Public Work Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association and Canadian Public Works Association, it should be recognized this year as stronger together. Now therefore I, Janelle Osborne, Mayor of the City of Lompoke, California, do hereby proclaim National Public Work Weeks from May 16th to the 23rd of 2021. And thank you to all of our employees, staff, and contractors who help maintain all of our infrastructure as a full-service city. This really does have a huge impact. Congratulations. And there's your proclamation, if you'd like to say anything.
Thank you all. We're doing a little lower-key celebration this year, which used to take up more of the lobby in years where we had more visitors. But just recognizing each of our divisions that contribute to the Public Works Department and each employee, we're thankful for each one, and thank you for recognizing them.
Thank you. There were no other proclamations presented elsewhere. Any presentations? I don't see any on the agenda, so we'll turn to the city manager for the city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to take a proud parent moment here, and I'm going to give a shout out to my daughter Haley, who just graduated this last Saturday from West Virginia University with a degree in animal science. So she made the parents very proud to make it through all of that. So we were actually back there for that graduation, just flew in late last night, so I'm here, but I'm still a little jet-lagged, I guess you could say. I do want to, I said it the last couple times, but the new Lompoke Outdoor Community Market has been a huge success. I don't know, I think Mario, our Parks Rec Manager, sent it out, but just last weekend, the entire market was sold out for vendors. All the spots were rented. We also had the county public health administering COVID vaccination shots there. After just a few weeks, this thing has really taken off. There's all kinds of fun things to do out there now. And I think as it gets more and more popular, we'll see even better things come of it. We're working on a new logo. We have our Parks Rec Manager, as well as Samantha, our PIO, working together to create an actual logo for the outdoor market. On Tuesday, May 18th, the Village Library reopened for grab-and-go services. Community members can make a purpose-driven appointment to browse the library, check out materials, use the computers, make copies and prints. Hold pickup service has also started at the Village Library. Masks are required, and some services are still not available. Please call 805-733-3323 to schedule an appointment today if you wish to visit the Village Library. Let's see, tomorrow we have the State of the City, given by the mayor. It's sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce. If you go to their website, and you can sign up for that State of the City presentation for the tomorrow's showing, or it will be shown the next day for free. The next one will be Thursday, May 20th, 6:30 PM here in the chamber. That will be the first special meeting to discuss the new and upcoming budget. We'll start by having department presentations, discussing, you know, who they are, what they do, what they've done the last year. You know, even getting through COVID, we were extremely successful, and some of the things they're looking forward to in the next budget. We'll be discussing the proposed budget, as well as the proposed CIP document, and then a discussion about the new ARPA, or the American Recovery Plan Act funds that we are receiving, which we did put in for, and we should be, by the Treasury Department said it takes about five days, so we still have two or three more days to go before we officially have them in our bank account. And that's all I had.
Thank you. Any questions for city manager? Seeing none, we will move to the next item on the agenda. That is our consent calendar. The consent calendar is considered to be routine and enacted in one motion from the form listed below. If you would like to comment on consent calendar, now is the time. You may come forward to the podium and take three minutes to comment on items one, two, or three. If you would like to call in, you are welcome to do so. The number is 805-875-8201, 805-875-8201. And remember to mute your radio, given we are unable to have streaming tonight. The system has got an issue, and we're trying to resolve that, but you can listen to us on KPEG 100.9 FM. If you would like to speak on consent calendar, you may come to the podium now.
Philip Gallanders, Lompoke. Addressing point number three, two questions. With regard to the road repairs, is there any documentation that's publicly available showing us which roads? And finally, and more importantly, is one of those roads to be Olive because of the heavy traffic of construction trucks going up and down that road, scores of them every day? It's a residential road with three schools. It's not according to the Lompoke permitted heavy truck traffic route. It's out of the permit, and it's a lighter road. So is that road to be fixed after all of this? And if so, is it being fixed on our dime? Thank you.
Thank you. So again, the number to call for consent calendar items is 805-875-8201, 805-875-8201. Or you may come to the podium and speak for three minutes. Madam Clerk, did we have any written comments on consent calendar?
No, ma'am, nothing.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm sorry, we did have something. Mr. Steve Bridge sent in a comment on item number one. It was delivered to council, placed on the website. I don't think I actually made copies for the room, but it is available for the public.
Thank you. All right. We have a caller.
Good evening. You're live in the Lompoke City Council meeting. You have three minutes to give your public comment. Please go ahead.
Hello, my name is Teresa Doughtney. I'm trying to watch this council meeting because it's, I have heard it's very important to me, and I'm finding it impossible to do so. Do I need to come down there? What's going on? Was this intentional? Thank you very much.
For those of you that are attempting to watch, our streaming is down. You can come to council and participate. We are open to the public. There is masks and social distancing per the California Public Health Order. Or you may listen on KPEG 100.9. Seeing no additional calls and no one else rise, I will bring this back to council. Any questions, concerns? If not, council member Vega?
I'll make a motion that we accept consent calendar.
Thank you.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. All right, there are no staff presentations or announcements outside of the agenda, so we'll move on to oral communications on city matters. At this point, you have three minutes to discuss anything that is not on the agenda regarding our city. You may call in at 805-875-8201, or speak at the podium for three minutes. Floor is yours.
Deb Andrews, Mission Hills. This was discussed last week, but I think it deserves more attention. The historical records are vital to understand where we have been versus where we find ourselves in 2021. I moved here in 2017 and determined there was a boot on the neck of Lompoke, preventing it from thriving. I've heard from many longtime residents of Lompoke the things they enjoyed that no longer exist: small shops, restaurants, quiet evenings, and friendly, welcoming customer service staff. What decisions and actions taken by city leaders and elected officials changed the quality of life and business opportunities in Lompoke over the years? All records matter. It wasn't just a few departments that culminated in what we see today. The Lompoke Chamber completely canceled history, even eliminating the volunteer historian who rarely missed a day of work. A man at Surf Beach told me the deep state largely controlled Lompoke. Though the three-man deep state block on the city council hampered deep state objectives, that block is now broken. The recent election removed a strong voice for the citizens. The historical record should be a point of reference moving forward. If what you are doing doesn't benefit citizens, stop doing it, rescind it, delete it, and all those who collect a paycheck and believe they rule over us. Every decision made should be in the citizen's best interest. In previous testimony, I called out your purgory of oath relating to decisions made by you limiting citizen freedoms, though not supported by science. In addition, now, there are Nuremberg tribunals being prepared to bring to trial all those worldwide who colluded to commit crimes against humanity related to COVID-19.
Again, oral communications are open. You may speak to city matters not on the agenda. You may also call in at 805-875-8201. Madam Clerk, did we have any written communications of general nature?
No, ma'am, nothing in general.
Thank you. Floor is yours.
Good evening, council. John Lynn, Lompoke resident. In the midst of COVID, the city council reviewed Safe and Sound Firework Sales. The enrollment period for 2021 sales came and went. Instead of the usual five or six booths, only two organizations submitted an application were approved by city staff. None of the other organizations that sold fireworks in prior years were contacted or notified. That means that two organizations will have about two and a half times the normal sales, and perhaps double to triple their normal profit. Based on requests from prior booth holders, council members Starbuck and Vega sought to extend the enrollment period at a past council meeting, but couldn't get a third. Since then, I've become aware of several distressing circumstances with regard to noticing and the successful bidders. First, the notice required by law that applications for sales were being accepted was in the Lompoke Record on February 3rd, and it stated that the application period closed on February 1st. I'm providing you a copy. Second, the two approved applications were the City Employees Recreation Club and a local church, both of whom who had had sold in previous years. It is certainly a coincidence that the City Employees Recreation Club submitted and had their application approved while other past participants were not contacted. The second coincidence is that one council member is directly related to the pastor of the church, and is said to have a financial connection to the church, and did not disclose that when Safe and Sound Firework Sales were discussed by the council. As the city failed to provide timely notice in the Lompoke Record, or contact prior participants, along with the two coincidences discussed, I again ask this council to reopen the application period for 15 days. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Philip Gallanders, Lompoke resident. I'm going to revisit the issue of the roads. Last week, after observing on one day in five minutes, six heavy double-trailer construction trucks going down Olive to I, and the following day, within an hour and a half, 16 of them going up V to Olive to go down to Y, I got into communication with city manager Throop. And at the end of all of that, it turned out that they were using a non-permitted road access. The city of Lompoke has a permitted road access, which is to 46 to F to Cypress to I and up the canyon. This was going, all of these heavy trucks, and I don't know how many total, but I saw 20 in a two-hour period over two days. This is a residential road. It is not a commercial road. This is a road that has three schools along its length, from Megalito to the Lompoke Middle to La Purissima. This is a road that is not stressed for heavy construction equipment. There is a road that is, and it is the permitted road of this city. I, twice on my communications, asked that this matter be made an agenda item. It was not. It was not for purposes I do not know. It was not for purposes I do not know, it was never explained why, my request was denied. It wasn't even addressed. If we are going to be ruining our roads and potentially killing our children along the way for the convenience of a construction project, that is a poor decision, at best. I would hope that Lompoke is getting well recompensed. I suspect that is the case, because nothing happens without pay. And this is a disappointment.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Shawn Dell-Malcolm, and I've been a resident of Lompoke since 1985. In 1992, I started working and I've been a taxpayer in Lompoke since. Many of you are taxpayers as well. With our taxes, the city council allocates that money to pay for certain things like emergency services, sanitation, parks and recreation, and many other things, including maintenance of our public lands, public lands that you and I own. In 2018, the city council, which included at that time members Victor Vega, Dirk Starbuck, and Janelle Osborne, unanimously voted to spend over $500,000 of your money to clean the riverbed. Many of us cautioned that doing so without a plan would be a waste of money. The money was spent, and the city of Lompoke has failed to maintain the cleanliness of our public lands. This year, our plan was to do a monthly cleanup in the riverbed. However, after our first cleanup, we were asked by a county representative to do biweekly cleanups. So since January of 2021 until May of 2022, you, the community members, have removed over 100 tons of trash from the riverbed. Although we have asked our city council to waive the fees, we were denied. This means that the city of Lompoke is collecting your taxes and collecting a fee at the landfill, thereby double taxing each and every taxpayer in Lompoke. So, just to break this down, we collected 24.6 tons of trash during one cleanup, and we were charged $2,200. If the city waived that $2,200 biweekly as we do our cleanups, it would only cost $57,200. That is saving you, as a taxpayer, $442,800 for doing the cleanup. On April 21st, I met with our city manager and our city attorney to discuss a fee waiver. The city was going to work on a draft agreement for the fees. It's been nearly a month with no response. We are asking the community now to take action by either calling the council members and requesting a fee waiver, by emailing the council member, or by coming to city council and speaking on our behalf. But before I close, I want to commend Councilmember Jeremy Ball for volunteering during the cleanup and submitting a letter of support. I also want to invite the council members to join me this Saturday, 9:00 a.m. We will be meeting at Home Depot parking lot and cleaning up abandoned camps at the intersection of Highway 1 and 246. Bring your gloves, mask, and a shovel, and a rake, and be ready to work. This is not a photo op.
Thank you. Seeing no additional...
Hello, my name is Susan Hutzbeth, resident of Lompoke. And I just want to encourage you all to take up his invitation, everybody here and people out there who are listening, to take up his invitation to go out there and help. You care about this city, the city of Lompoke? Do you care about our water quality? Then show it, and come out and help, please. Thank you. Oh, and please, city council, waive those fees, please, we'd appreciate it, that you would really be showing your support and your care. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilmen and councilwomen. My name is Frank Cobian, and I've been a resident of Lompoke for 34 years. One of the things that I want to bring up is our youth. We have a lot of youth here in Lompoke, and of course, right now, we have them playing softball, and we have them playing baseball. One of the other sports that is really big in Lompoke and that shies away is soccer. Some clubs, there's about five to six clubs here in Lompoke, that get shy away from benefits because we are not AYSO big. Some of us are nonprofit, and are insured, and have a lot of kids that play. But when it comes to play, we cannot get fields, we get the runaround, and it's really sad to see that our city doesn't back that part of the sport here. We have to go all the way to Oxnard, Ventura, even LA to play home games. I, for example, had to go to Oxnard this weekend, spend over $500 to secure a field for our kids from Lompoke to play. Now, it saddens me that when I call Park and Rec, I get the runaround, I don't get calls back, I have to persist, keep calling and keep calling. I just wish that you, council, bring it up more often. This community does need something for our youth. The rise in crime due to gangs, there is nothing for the youth here. You guys taking away the bowling alley, a couple youth programs that used to be here back in the early 2000s, late 90s? I myself was part of that. I used to love going to the bowling alley, having fun, got me out of trouble. Now I see it in my own hood. I live on Maple Street, in West Maple. I see every day those kids just getting worse and worse. I've taken some of those kids. I give them opportunities to better their lives, to play a sport that opens up their mind, and to see that there's more opportunities other than just gangs. My plea to you guys is to give these other sports a second chance, an eye-opener, not to give us the runaround when we ask for a field to practice on, or to play a game. I urge you, please, open your hearts to the game of soccer. I understand we're not AYSO big, AYSO big, but we do bring in revenue for the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy Howard, I have another topic I'm going to speak on, but I must speak in support of Shawn Dell-Malcolm. I think it is a sad, sad commentary that this city will not support a volunteer group that they, that the city will not do by waiving the dumping fees or tipping fees, whatever they call it. It is a small thing for the city, but a big thing that these volunteers are doing. Please, please, support this group that are doing something that you won't do, and do it very soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Gary Halsey, Lompoke residents. I'm just wondering if the city council has thought about a plan for reopening its building department and offices to the public to make things easier as we're evolving through this COVID pandemic? And we're being told that mask requirements are coming down and things like this, so just wondering if you guys have thought about a plan for reopening? Because I feel like that the residents of Lompoke are suffering without having access to, in my case, the building department for simple questions that seem to take a month to get answered, where usually we can come in and get that answered pretty quick. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no phone calls or additional rise to the podium, we will close oral communications and bring it back to the council agenda. Our next item is item number four, public hearing regarding nuisance abatement of weeds, rubbish, and refuse, and dirt, adoption of resolution number 6409 (21). And our battalion chief, Deana Pashke, is here to make the presentation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council staff, and our community members. Tonight, we're here for the second letter, which is the public hearing for annual weed abatement. Each year, we have to come back to council, per the government code, on an annual basis by the calendar to readopt which parcels still need additional attention. And that is the reason we're here tonight, to have several subject properties reviewed. And staff recommends that we are currently holding the public hearing, and that we also, if you so choose, to adopt resolution 6409-21, or provide alternative direction. And this is in accordance with our last resolution for the first letter, so I thought it's kind of nice to have a few stats as to where we're at in the process. By April 1st, we had inspected over 600 lots in the city, in the interest of public safety to keep our lots cleared of not only debris, which some of the homeowners find kind of harsh to hear that because they don't have trash on their lots, but it's part of the, correct me, legal statements that we have to do to include that. But we do find some lots that do have debris on them. But we inspected over 600, and as you probably saw down in the LA area, we've already had one decent-sized wildfire in the city of LA, about 1,300 acres. So we're right on schedule, a couple weeks earlier this year because of lack of rain. We sent out, I sent out first letters to just under 150 lot owners, 148 to be exact. By May 1st, we had reinspected all of the 150 lots, plus a few more, because a few more people kind of pop up and maybe mention a lot or two. And so we had just about several visits to get through that first letter. By the time we sent out second letters, which were all sent through certified mail, we already had 50% compliance, which is pretty good. 73 lots had remained. So it's a current capture, when you see the list, as to whether they might have mowed even the afternoon after you looked at the lot in the morning. So it's kind of a moving target, but where we're at of those 73 lots that got the certified letter, besides several lots kind of sending, not receiving them, although this lot just received letters about a month ago, that would be in front of Mervyn's, for instance, and that one goes to Rockefeller, New York, so we actually have some pretty good wingspan as to where we have to send these letters, 41 lots remain. Of those 41 lots, 26 lots have either commenced, started the work, or they've emailed or contacted me by phone and said, hey, my gardener's coming at this date, which is fabulous, because we understand it's a lot of pressure on our local landscapers maybe to have kind of a really harsh deadline. And finally, our last little fun weed abatement fact is, of the statistic of the last 41 lots, about half of them, 22 lots are owned by just eight owners. Some are multiple lots within a homeowners association, some owners have several lots that are sometimes contiguous, sometimes they're kind of moving. So really, we're pretty good standing, we're down to 22 lots that we're kind of looking at. Last year, we only had to force two lots. So when you see the list still at, you know, in double digits, it's not that we're going to be forcing this many lots. So I just want to give a little background as to where we're at. So, part of the fiscal impacts of this program is rather light towards the city. It does take a full calendar year, because we do have a teeter plan on the property taxes, so we actually have to wait to the next property tax cycle. At such time, if we have to go down the forced abatement route, then the time that I spend going to the lots multiple times will get added on to that. Last year, we only had one larger lot, and one lot is actually from a person that is deceased and doesn't have any heirs, so it's kind of an ongoing issue. Hopefully, we'll have that same type of compliance with only two lots this year. So that's an established program that we do as far as recovering the fees, and our city attorney's office helps immensely with that. So with that, we have several lots that, again, are still on the exhibit A that are proposed as a nuisance at this time. But I do offer that we reach out, we contact people, and it's the last effort that we really want to do is to force them to clear their land. We have, as you may have seen, maybe the corner of Ancient Ocean underneath the oak tree, that lot is very clear. If you look over, before you get to Home Depot, not the lot across from Home Depot, that large parcel is also very clear. There's also smaller lots that maybe you drive by and don't quite notice, so we're getting really good compliance. It also helps the city look really good. I personally talked with half a dozen landscapers the last three days. As I was arriving, even about 5 o'clock on one, they were weed whacking on that large lot behind the skilled nursing facility on West North Avenue. You'll see the corner at the Y is cleared from the gentleman, the gentleman that owns that lot actually cleared it himself. So with that, have the list before you, and that is the conclusion, if you wish to adopt the resolution, which I would hope support, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? None, thank you. We will open the floor for a public comment on this, item number four. If you would like to call in, the number to call is 805-875-8201. If you're in the room and would like to speak, please come to the podium, you have three minutes. Were there any written communications on item four, madam clerk?
No ma'am, nothing.
Thank you. For those of you just tuning in, if you're attempting to stream or watch, unfortunately, our equipment has gone down, so you may come in person, or you may listen on KPEG 100.9, or call in at 805-875-8201. City manager, yes?
Quick update, we do have audio on that, we just don't have picture yet.
So on the streaming, or on channel 23, or both?
Both.
Both?
On both, yes.
So audio is now available?
Still working on the visual. I don't know yet what caused it, but they're still working on it.
So even our TV and streaming is acting like the radio, but at least you have sound. So, better than nothing. So we apologize for losing the visual, and we'll continue to work on that, but at least we have streaming sound on channel 23 and on our city website page. So, item number four is open for public comment. Seeing no additional calls or individuals stepping to the podium for item four, I will close public comment and bring it back to council. Councilmember Cordova.
I move to adopt the resolution number 6409 (21), the nuisance abatement of weeds, rubbish, refuse, dirt, and a...
I'll give a second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second by Councilmember Vega. Any other questions? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes five zero. Item number five is also a public hearing. It's introduction of ordinance number 1680 (21), amending chapter 10.30 and title 17 of the Lompoke Municipal Code to revise and establish regulations for the safe parking programs, and repeal of city council resolution 6179 (18) regarding safe parking programs. And we have our planning manager, Brian Halverson, to present the information.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council and the community this evening. I am going to present an item that's going to be Longpoke Municipal Code text amendments. So we'll go ahead and get started. Just to give a little background on this item, safe parking is already defined in our code. And although that section of the code does prohibit sleeping in vehicles overnight on both public and private property, it makes an exception for people sleeping in their vehicles as part of a safe parking program. And I wanted to just really quickly read the definition in our code of a safe parking program. It says as follows, this is 10.30.020, says, "Safe parking program means a parking program operated on property located outside of the public right-of-way and managed by a social service provider that provides individuals and families with vehicles a safe place to park overnight while working towards a transition to permanent housing." Safe parking right now in our zoning code is allowed with a conditional use permit in every zone except residential mobile home park and the airport overlay zone. In regards to that, there's no right now standards or requirements for safe parking, except for the fact that it needs to be managed by a social service provider. So that's one of the reasons why we're here this evening, is to go ahead and incorporate those requirements and standards into our code. In 2018, seems like it's been forever, but the City Council adopted Resolution Number 6179-18, which established the regulations for safe parking programs. The regulations were never incorporated into the zoning code. As you probably all remember, we were going through a massive overhaul of the zoning code. Very proud that that was finished in the end of 2019, implemented in 2020. The Planning Commission reviewed the amendments that are before you tonight, and they recommended adoption of the amendments to the code for the safe parking programs. I'm going to go over very quickly, just kind of on the surface, of some of the major changes. One is the conditional use permit requirement that I mentioned earlier is going to change to an administrative use permit. Now, that being said, conditions of approval can still be attached. That's a director-level, staff-level permit. And that particular permit will still allow city staff to ensure that there aren't detrimental impacts to the public health and safety, nor cause injury to surrounding properties. Further, there'll be a new section of the code, 17.404, which is the specific to use standard section, that will be added on to the code. And that new section carries over the regulations from Resolution 6179-18, but expands it. I'll get into that in just a second. The new section talks about application requirements, site requirements, and operational standards that I'll go over very quickly with you. These are a lot. I'm going to just quickly, briefly, go over them. Lighting for security, rest from water and trash facilities, no signage, social services, provider and case management to be provided by participants, a residency preference, for example, in Santa Barbara County, and living in the county six of the last 24 months, required agreements and terms, prohibition of drugs, alcohol, weapons, fires. The list goes on and on of those items. In addition, there will be a limit that staff will put, as each application comes in, on the number of spaces. Obviously, you don't want them just crammed in there, and so they will be reviewed on a case-by-case basis. Location restrictions will apply, as well as setbacks we're able to attach to that application, to that proposal. So some of the other standards will be, of course, when people come to the planning counter, they ask, you know, what the zoning district is and what you can do in that zone. Safe parking programs would be allowed in any zone in the city, except MH is the mobile home park, AO is airport overlay, and OS is the open space zone. The RA, R1, R2, and R3 residential zones, which is where most of us live, would apply, would only be allowed on property owned by a public entity or as an accessory use on properties with a primary use of a community assembly. Good example is the church. So even though the property maybe allows the church, the church actually has to be there, the primary use has to be established first before you introduce that parking program. So I think that's an important thing to know. Administrative use permit is going to be a two-year permit, so they'll need to ask for an extension. And the application fee would actually be waived. In short, we're asking the council tonight, we're introducing, have you introduced ordinance number 1680-21, amending Chapter 10 and 17 to revise and establish regulations for the safe parking programs, repeal City Council Resolution 6179-18, or provide other direction to staff? And although that concludes my presentation, I just want to make a statement that I am not an expert in parking, safe parking programs. It would be something new for the planning division to oversee. So if you have questions at this time, I'll try my best, but by no stretch of the imagination am I an expert in this type of social program. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Does staff have questions for Mr. Halverson? Councilmember Vega?
Hey, Brian, the, they're asking that you waive or do away with the CUP process, which takes it back to a staffing level, which, again, would take it away from notification of the residents that this type of program would be moving into their neighborhood. Is that correct?
That is correct. A conditional use permit would require the surrounding property owners within 500 feet. But we would still need to make a determination, and we would still do a posting, but it would not be to the surrounding neighbors within 500 feet.
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to use an example here of the proposed safe parking program as we move forward here. For instance, the newly proposed site will be in District 2, which I'm a representative of. That means that the residents there would not be notified, the business owners would not be notified, and it would just be implemented at a staffing level. And I'm just kind of bringing that up so it's clear for everyone to know that, yes, it's meant to take away some of the red tape so the safe parking program can move forward. But again, it does take away some of the input and the transparency issues for the city of Longpoke, for the residents in their areas. And I can tell you, it should be a concern to everyone, because crime statistics should matter regardless of whether or not this adds to the crime rate or not, which I'm not clear on that, I'm not an expert also on this. But it could be. And again, I think it's really good for the people that live in my district or anywhere in Longpoke to be concerned with having another entity placed in their area, because even though it's at night, we have a preschool, we have business community right across the alley, and we have El Camino School, and we have Longpoke High School. So I'm not sure that District 2 has the capacity to accept any more programs here. So I wanted to just make that as an example and be clear here that that's what the city staff is proposing, that you not be able to be notified. So if any of you have a vacant lot, have a parking lot, have a church nearby, it could turn into a safe parking program without notification. I'm not against a safe parking program within parameters. What I'm, what I just want to make sure and make clear is that you, as residents of Longpoke, are notified that this may be going on so that you can have public input in case you agree or disagree.
Thanks, Brian. That's kind of my point.
Did anyone from the New Beginnings Organization make it to tonight? If you would mind coming forward, I have a question or two that I think you can answer regarding these requests that I know our city staff, it doesn't have the experience to potentially answer. Thank you. My understanding is that as the potential social service provider to run this program, that part of it is to help protect those that enter the program and to reduce the nimbyism that occurs with these sort of programs. Can you explain a little bit further as to why you've made the request for the change in our ordinance?
So we've been operating in Southern Santa Barbara County. Yes, my name is Cassie Roach. I'm the Programs Manager for the New Beginnings Safe Parking Program. And we've been operating in Southern Santa Barbara County for over 17 years without any incidents. So in terms of crimes being increased in the surrounding area of the program, that has not been the case in the over 17 years that we've been operating in Southern Santa Barbara County. We have chosen to keep the locations in Santa Barbara confidential, because many of our folks are fleeing domestic violence situations and are not in a position to want to be in a place where other folks could know where they are. And we've also seen that by operating the way in which we do, we have very strict regulations for folks and rules that they have to follow and abide by, so that they do not draw attention to themselves or to the lot in its operation. And we've had neighbors that have been in the community where a lot is, in the neighborhood where a lot is operating for over 15 years, and they had no idea that it was there, because we operate the program in such a way that it does not draw the attention, does not draw crime, it doesn't draw extra people, it's very tightly regulated, and we're able to control who is accessing a lot by keeping the locations confidential, so that we're not inviting extra folks to come in who haven't already been vetted by the program staff.
And then the other question is, if we leave it at the CUP level, there is a fee associated with that that would be more difficult to waive, and it makes it cost prohibitive to your program, is that correct?
That is correct. We are a nonprofit. We don't have just readily expendable funds. Everything is grant-based, and grants have very, very strict guidelines on what the funds can be used for and what they cannot be used for. So all of that would have to be an out-of-pocket cost, and we're a relatively small nonprofit, New Beginnings, so that would be a very difficult task for us to, if we are trying to actually grow the program, to be able to serve all of the Longpoke community members who are indeed already living in their vehicle here in your community, then more lots are needed and more permits is cost prohibitive.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Starbuck?
Yeah, where's Mr. Halverson?
He's right there.
Ah.
Yes, Councilmember Starbuck.
You know, it's ironic that two and a half years ago, we passed a resolution that we're trying to override now, because we didn't do anything with it now, but in a couple of weeks, we get this. I'm curious why we're going to waive an application fee.
That's a very good question.
We don't waive fees for anybody, haven't done it. We won't do it for Shondell Malcolm. We've gone council's control with that, but we're going to waive for this.
Good question. Staff did discuss that, Councilmember Starbuck. And there are times, not very often, as you know, that these types of things come up. We wrote it into the ordinance this evening. So right now, it's obviously in your purview to take a look at that. You don't have to, but that's what we're recommending. I, for me, I think one of the things is sometimes you have to give a little bit in order to get something, and as you know, homelessness is a pretty big issue here in California. And we want to believe that this program is going to help that, and specifically those individuals and families that are residing on public streets. It's going to get them to a safe area. So that might be the cost of getting them to a safe area, waiving that fee. Obviously, New Beginnings spoke this evening, and they know the program better, and they know their budgets more. So I would defer to them on how that could potentially make or break their program.
Well, you know, so far, if this, you know, administrative action passes, I guess my next question, be it's free, how much are we going to expand this program? I have it next door to me now, so there was recusal in the past. Now it's citywide, I can participate. But how many more? The mayor had made a comment that night that, oh, well, we can put it in all the districts eventually. So all of a sudden, if we make it administrative, it's a program that is controlled internally and can go anywhere in the city.
Well, there are some restrictions, but no, I understand, there is no cap, but there are restrictions.
Well, my public input was deleted because of a forced recusal last time. So what happens now is we're going to do away with all public input and leave it up to staff to say, oh, sure, we can go ahead and put this program next to you, or here or there. So that's what I'm reading. It's almost like the county is making their problem, their social service network is being filtered into Longpoke, no funding for us. What is this going to cost the city? What is our, you know, we're waiving a fee for an application. It's obviously not going to go to social services on our street, it's going to be placed wherever you deem necessary. What's the cost on it? What's going to happen?
I would have to defer to other departments, such as the Police Department and any other departments like Public Works that are charged with regulating our public streets. And also, as you know, we get complaints, the planning department, because people are parking in front of, you know, businesses, and it does affect their business when...
Absolutely, but this is doing with the safe parking program.
Community Development Director, Ms. Alacarn, has been waving her hands and is...
I'll wave at her.
Would like to contribute to your questions.
So to speak to the first question, the current Resolution 6179-18 that you all approved, it waives the fee. So it waives the fee for a CUP. So with question to, regards to how much the fee costs, it was zero back in 2018 when you all approved it. Second question, what's the county going to pay? The county's funding their program. The county is paying for all of the site improvements to a city-owned site in order to make it more secure and to create some visual barriers so it's not affecting the businesses. So the city isn't paying anything for this. It's just making the process a little smoother, which we thought would be helpful in getting our vehicular homeless in a safe spot and off of our streets.
Well, I guess if the county's paying for it, then, and we can't define how many are coming into Longpoke, I'm curious what the county intends to do. Maybe San Ynez are going to fund one, Cuayama, is this happening throughout the county?
Yes, Councilmember Starbuck, it is happening throughout the county. Northern Santa Barbara County has gotten funding in order to do this. So our current case managers of these programs could probably speak to what other cities are participating. I know Santa Maria for sure, they're located in the Village right now. So Galida, it's, they're throughout Santa Barbara County, but they're pretty low-key, so you're not hearing about any problems, because there haven't been any.
So I guess it's moving into Mission Hills, Vandenberg Village, the whole thing there. I just, so we, our cost is nothing other than the fact that we're waiving fees and we're doing a bunch of paperwork and giving out our property to use. That's what I gather here.
Councilmember Ma.
Okay, so let's just, we've got a lot on our agenda tonight, so I'll be quick with this one. This is a critical juncture for Longpoke. If we approve waiving the fees, we allow a group with a 17-year track record of doing good and addressing homelessness, which is an obvious problem in our community, we allow them to get involved and help us in Longpoke. That's important. The other thing that bothers me is every time we talk about homeless people, homeless folks, we hear the word criminal come up, and I'm getting a little bit tired of that. I know there are criminals out there. There are people that are committing crimes, suffering from drug addiction and lots of things. But these, again, are humans. Now, I'd love to speak with our two ladies that came from the group. Can you talk to us about the criminal element that you guys attract to this? I don't see it, and if anything, I learned from last time, and it shocked me during the presentation from your group, that the majority, almost 80% of people benefiting from your services are senior citizens. Senior citizens that do not have a home, they are on a very fixed income, and all we do sometimes is lock everyone into one category of being a criminal. I don't buy that approach. I'd love to hear your feedback on those topics.
Yeah, absolutely. So over 80% are over age 55 and up, and over a third are over 62, and over a third are actually employed. So it is folks that have fallen out of the middle class, that are what you would consider working poor, that have just fallen on hard times, just like any of us can. Many folks are living paycheck to paycheck, and if your landlord decides to up the rent more than you can afford, you have a car, it's better than a shelter for some people, and that's what they're left with. In what we've seen in 17 years, the vast majority of our clients... In what we've seen in seventeen years, the vast majority of our clients do not have any sort of substance use history. They've just fallen on hard times. They're, they had a catastrophic illness, they had a parent that they were caring for pass away, and then they haven't had rental history in years, they haven't had employment history in years. Now, they're over fifty, fifty-five themselves, back out in the rental market, back out in the job market, and it's really difficult to make those ends meet. We have seen, I personally, in over five years, have never seen any crime associated with our program or any of our clients. The vast majority don't have any sort of criminal history. The minority that do, it's six, ten, fifteen, twenty years in the past. These truly are folks that are just, they've been dealt a really difficult hand, and they're just trying to make ends meet and get back on their feet, and our program gives them a safe place to do that. They're able to have a safe and secure place to sleep at night, where they're not having to sleep with one eye open, worried about police knocking on their window, worried about neighbors complaining about them, and trying to just hide under the radar so that people aren't going to harass them. And it's much safer for them to be in a, in a location, in a lot, that's monitored, that has case managers working with them to try and get them to a safer place, to get them to a stable place where they are employed, where they are housed again, and they're able to be a contributing member of the community, more so than when they're struggling in the dark, on a dark street, just living in their vehicle, trying not to bother people.
Thank you. I have one more question for you. So, this group has been working for seventeen years. I have to assume that you've had to stand up and work with entities, churches, businesses, neighborhoods, et cetera. Seventeen years of work. Can you talk to us about the, how has it been working with businesses? How receptive have they been to this? I'm sure you've had some pushback at times, but you've been doing it for seventeen years.
Yes.
Talk to me about that.
So, in Southern Santa Barbara County, we currently have twenty-six different lots that we work with. So, that's city-owned lots, county-owned lots, faith-based communities, and some for-profit businesses work with us, and other nonprofits as well. So, we've seen lots of different folks take a chance on us and give us maybe two spaces to start with, and then they realize, this doesn't impact us at all, this is working really well. We can add more spaces, and they've done that. And they've realized that it's not as daunting and as scary as it might sound at first when you don't have experience with the program. It really is just using an empty parking lot at night, that no one else is using it, it's just sitting there, it's an unused community resource that is able to be repurposed so that folks experiencing homelessness, living in their vehicles, and trying to get back on their feet, they have that safe place and are able to stabilize and move forward. And then they leave in the morning, and the lot is then used as, as it is intended, for church events, for business clientele parking, what have you. And there has been pushback, and we've honestly won everyone over because there have been so few instances, actually, no instances, of any real issues.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Councilmember Cordova.
So, I, I want to take a little bit of a different approach on this. I know one of the things that was, one of my first questions when I got on council was, how do we restrict the number of vehicles that park on our city streets, whether it's motorhomes or whatever the case is? And that was one of the first questions that I asked, and city attorney, if you could tell me, how do we do that? How are we able to pass an ordinance where we can restrict the vehicles that are actually parking their motorhomes or in front of someone's house or in front of someone's business and dumping their, their garbage or whatever the case is? How are we able to do that?
Well, we're allowed to adopt ordinances to restrict the parking or prohibit the parking of oversized vehicles on residential streets or on other streets. We're also allowed to adopt parking ordinances to prohibit residential uses of vehicles on our streets, which is, we have such an ordinance. But we're not allowed to enforce that ordinance essentially for people sleeping in their vehicles. We're not allowed to enforce that ordinance unless there is an alternative place for the, for that vehicle or that person to go where there is a bed or a place to sleep. And that's from a federal court decision from the Ninth Circuit from a couple of years ago. So, we have an ordinance to prevent people from sleeping in their vehicles. We cannot enforce it unless there's another place for those vehicles to go. And so, this Safe Parking Program is a way to always have a place for the vehicle to go, and therefore, we can enforce our no sleeping in vehicles ordinance.
Thank you. So, here's my thing. As a community, and, and I feel that as a council, a lot of times, we're so quick to say, no, 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 we don't want this, we don't want this, we don't want this, instead of actually looking at how can this benefit us? So, here's the thing. So, if council already adopted in two thousand eighteen an ordinance that says that the CUP fees were waived, then that problem's been solved. Why are we changing it then from a CUP to an AUP if, if we said tonight that the reason why the CUP, removing the CUP is because it's cost prohibitive, but that's already been waived back in two thousand eighteen? So, why change it from a CUP to an AUP? Because I feel like that's part of the uproar tonight.
So, the, the reason for changing it from the CUP to the AUP was when you get into the real-life implementation of a program like this, disclosing to everywhere, everybody where these things are located at can create some issues for those that are utilizing it for their safety. As was stated earlier, you, you sometimes have people fleeing domestic violence situations. You do have people that are predators and want to go after those that are homeless, and that's why they need a safe parking lot in order to feel safe. These lots are monitored by parking lot monitors. That's funded positions through these county funding and state funding and Veterans Administration funding, not the City of Lompoc funding, for them to staff these parking lots. So, the reason for shifting to the AUP process was, one, it will reduce staff workload. We don't have to prepare a staff report to the Planning Commission, do the public noticing. All of those things were the cost that you were waiving in order to do a CUP. In doing an AUP, you've now eliminated all of those costs, those staff hours, all of those things, and you're adopting, in this AUP, in this ordinance, you're adopting all of the conditions that the Planning Commission would have applied to whatever site we're looking at. Staff are still going to do our due diligence in reviewing the site, making they're not, making sure they're not too close to the neighboring lots, making sure that there's the appropriate screening on the fencing to make sure that, you know, all of the requirements are met. And there's a whole list of them within the ordinance that's being proposed tonight. So, again, we're told repeatedly that you guys want to see streamlined processes to make these things more efficient, less costly, and not just costly to the applicants, but also on staffing. We all know our task list is enormous, so any way we can streamline things, that's the effort we're putting forth. If we want to continue to do, do the CUP process, just know that that fee waiver, the fee you're waiving now is about four thousand, six thousand dollars in staff time versus maybe three hundred, four hundred dollars in staff time. So, that's the difference.
Understood. I, yeah, that was way more than, but I understand your point, Chrissy, because I think it's important to point out that there are a lot of pluses to doing this. What I don't like to hear, though, is, is that we're going to streamline a program that is making a lot of our community members already a little bit weary because, again, we don't have, we should have had a proper presentation from, from the organization tonight so that they could actually go in detail and explain how the process works, but the staff report says it. And I think that we're better off getting into the details of what the regulations are and understanding that and knowing that there are some pluses that are going to come into our community. And with the regulations and, and everything that, that these individuals are going to have to follow, I assure you that criminals are not going to be parking here. They're not going to want to go through the rigorous paperwork and the having to, you know, have a caseworker assigned to them and having to make sure that they have a registration, a driver's license, all those things. It's very heavily regulated. There are some items in here that I'd like to question, but, but I think that that's where our, our efforts should be better made. And also, I was going to bring out, you know, that the improvements on the city building, you know, there are improvements that are being made to an empty building that is just sitting there right now, not being used for anything. I, I would question the number of parking spaces that are allowed in one particular spot. I think that the, the council could have a say-so in, or, or at least understand from you guys, what, to what is the capacity that you allow? Because it, it, it doesn't say that, and it leaves it very vague. And if the concern in the community is, is that we're going to have a hundred cars in one particular location, you guys know better, that's not really what happens, and that's where you get multiple locations, potentially, if it grows to that in the community of Lompoc. There's no guarantee that it will grow to that in the community of Lompoc, but I do understand Starbuck, Councilmember Starbuck's concern about how many of these are going to come, because we don't know, you know? But the reality is, is that by us getting into the weeds of the regulations as a council, that's our responsibility. I think we can put at ease the concerns of our community and be able to move a program forward where we can also piggyback and enforce ordinances that actually starts taking care of the parking issues and the issues that we have with people parking in front of people's homes, in their motorhomes, and dumping their trash in there, because those are the real criminals. Those are the people that don't care about somebody else's property.
To Councilmember Cordova's question, to you, Casey, my understanding is, it depends on the lot, it depends on the agreement with the entity that's offering the lot as to how many they're comfortable having. So, some lots, as you said, might have two.
Correct.
Some might have five.
Mm-hmm.
For an instance, can you tell us what the largest lot with the highest capacity is, say, in Southern, Southern County?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Out of probably fifty to seventy-five spaces.
Okay.
Because we also do not want people crammed in. We don't want people to feel like they're on top of each other. They want to have privacy, they want to have their own space. So, the, most of our lots have six or so spaces. We have a handful that have ten, and our biggest has fifteen. So, we do not at all want to bring a ton of people to one location because, again, we don't want to impact the neighborhood. And if we have fifty cars in a fifty-space lot, that's very visible, and that would impact the neighborhood, and we don't want to do that.
And then to Councilmember Vega's question, yes, our initial contract with you was for a city property that happens to be in District Two, but given how compact Lompoc is and the need, I, are you looking at potential partners in every district? Are you looking at locations, and have you identified potential locations throughout the city so that the, that it is spread through all of our community and that it isn't just burdening a single area of town?
Yes, we are looking to partner with different faith-based organizations and nonprofits initially, because those are folks that often align themselves with the same mission that we have in ending homelessness. But they are distributed, dispersed throughout, because we found that our folks, they're used to living in a specific neighborhood, in a certain area, and so if we have a lot in that area, over here, and over here, and over there, that's where they're used to being, and so they might, we might offer them a space in Zone A, but they're used to being over in Zone C, so they won't take the space in Zone A because that's outside their own comfort zone. So, it benefits us as well to have our lots dispersed throughout the community.
Okay. Councilmember Vega.
You made a couple of statements. If I could ask, that you guys are a small nonprofit. I've seen New Beginnings in just about many cities, so maybe you can explain how your entity's put together, because you guys are in different cities. How does the New Beginnings Safe Parking Program, how is it immersed, and how does it get spread out to, are you guys just one small part of, here in Santa Barbara County, of a larger entity, or, or what is it?
So, New Beginnings Counseling Center is only in Santa Barbara County. So, if there's another New Beginnings outside of Santa Barbara County...
Yeah.
It just so happens to have the same New Beginnings title. Our counseling center, our agency, is just in the county, and we do have, we started Safe Parking specifically in Santa Barbara and Galida, and just with recent funding from the county, we're now able to expand into northern Santa Barbara County and down into Carpinteria, potentially.
Well, thanks for that clarification. I did do my homework here, and I see that New Beginnings does have Safe Parking Programs in other cities, but you're saying you're not part of that?
Can you give me an example of other cities? I'm not sure I'm understanding.
Well, there are cities up there. I, I can't remember right off the bat, but there are other cities outside of Santa Barbara County that have it.
Other, correct. Other cities do have Safe Parking Programs that they have implemented based on the model because New Beginnings' model is essentially the national model for Safe Parking Programs, but they are not run by New Beginnings.
Okay. One of my questions here, I'd like to do a rebuttal there with Councilmember Ball. You mentioned the criminal, you said you were tired of hearing criminal. That was never mentioned. What it mentioned was, we have a high crime rate in District Two, and by adding another program that could potentially impact the residents there in, of their peace, quiet and, and quiet enjoyment here of owning property and the businesses of, of being successful here, you know, you have an alley, you have fences that you can see through. She mentioned that, that we try and put them in areas where nobody knows about them. That's not possible in Lompoc. So, it's, it's a different twist on what you just said, that you try and put them in areas where nobody knows that it's happening. It looks like this is a, a long way to go about changing the parking ordinance in Lompoc. So, I see what's happening here, but as the city attorney stated, well, if you have someplace to go, then we can take them off the street, but it's not going to be a towing yard, and it's not going to be in the daytime. So, it doesn't solve all the problems, as the city attorney stated. Yes, it's going to be a Safe Parking Program so they can sleep at night, and I'm an advocate of helping people that are in their cars and things. You know, we don't want to push them off the edge of the earth here to end up being in the homeless area, so let me clarify here. My issue is that in a district with such a high crime rate, it shouldn't be an additional burden to the residents who already have to listen and hear, and they have a fear factor walking down the streets. It's just another additional phobia that they're going to have to do, because by looking across the street, looking at the schools and everything, it just makes that area even, even worse. It makes it look worse, okay? Just as a visual. We, we, we deal with what we see, and, and I just wish that we had a couple more choices. I think that this ordinance, what we're doing, we're passing something with, with, with an open, just an open checkbook, so to speak. We're not putting any restrictions on it, just like Councilwoman Cordova said, we don't have any plan that anybody else, if they had to go and do an RV lot or some recreational vehicle, they would have some sort of capacities. They would have to submit a plan to say, how many vehicles are going to be here at night? How many places can we allow safe parking? We just said, hey, they can go wherever, whenever. I've never seen anybody get approval like that. It says wherever we want to put them in the county, we can do it. So, every church, every parking lot can be turned into, but that's exactly what was stated, all because the county is funding this. So, I'd like to have some restrictions that state that they do have to come back and ask for permissions. So, that's kind of what I'm saying, okay? I'm actually defending the residents of Lompoc, the people that live here, because it is a residential area, it isn't a school area. The fact that they say there's never been crime, you know, we've heard that before, okay? It's not about that they're criminalized. It's about that there's going to be another impact by adding more people, more vehicles, there's going to be some sort of noise there. I'm just looking out for the neighborhood.
Mayor?
Yes.
Before we get into too much discussion, we need to open the public comment period and get comment from the public.
Thanks for the reminder. Any more questions for staff or New Beginnings before we do that? Seeing none, thank you for that. We will now open the floor for public comment on item number five. If you would like to call in, the number to call is eight zero five, eight seven five, eight two zero one, eight zero five, eight seven five, eight two zero one. Or you may come to the podium, and you have three minutes.
Deb Andrews, Mission Hills. I've sat in this city council area over time and listened to many presentations about the homeless. What I've not heard is how government created this problem largely, and government is not held accountable for this problem. The cost of housing. Why are so many people unhoused? How do regulations, fees, zoning, permitting, and taxes contribute to the high cost of housing? That's unnecessary. That needs to be changed. If you need to work with county government and state government, do so, or else call us a sanctuary city from all those regulations so that we can house people. You've closed businesses. You've closed businesses. You've restricted businesses based on no science. This was just handed down, you accepted it, and you went along with it. People were thrown out of their jobs, and now we're talking about where to put people that have to sleep in their cars. We've heard that it's not due to drugs, they're not criminals. It's seniors. I'm seventy. That hits me very close to home. So I think government, city personnel, need to look at what you are doing to the citizens you're supposed to serve that causes this problem and the increase in this problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask the council to look at the possibility of this, uh, as we already have an ordinance that we seemingly may not be able to enforce because of a federal law under the Ninth Circuit District Court, but yet we have states' rights under the Tenth Amendment. So I'd like to see how that affects our ability to enforce what we already have as an ordinance. Thank you.
First, I'm, I'm all for the Safe Parking Program. What I'm not against is, is changing, um, the policies as, you know, it's being, uh, proposed from a CUP to a AUP. I think that there needs to be transparency. Lompoc has a huge problem with tr- transparency in all aspects, and for us just to take that away and not give that to the residents, I think is wrong. I hear the argument on the domestic violence issue, and I truly do. However, we're saying that the Safe Parking Program is more for seniors, and that there's not gonna be the criminal element there and everything else that goes with it. Well, domestic violence is part of that criminal element. So if that's not going to be there, then there should be no problem keeping it a CUP. The other part of that is that the Bridge House is a well-known establishment. Granted, it is in the county, but it's a well-known establishment. They have domestic violence people that go to the Bridge House. There is not an issue with it. The issue is, is with the check-in process, and if there's a failure in that, and that people are aware of that person who's experiencing domestic violence being, being, uh, admitted there, that's where the problem is, that's where the failure is. The failure is not in the community knowing where the Safe Parking Program's gonna be, or where the, where the Bridge House is. The other thing is that there's still going to be a cost for the city of Lompoc, and we cannot ignore that. We're saying that these are gonna be, you know, that the domestic violence, that eighty percent of them are elder. Well, we also know that emergency services comes with that. There is always going to be a cost, and we cannot ignore those costs and say that the county is picking up everything, because the county is not going to pick up the fire department cost, or our, um, ambulance costs that happen in the city of Lompoc. So I think we need to pay attention to that. Um, I think that's all I have for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
But, sorry, but like I said again, I, oh, with the code enforcement, because I still have a little bit of time, um, there is no way that we are gonna say that because we have Safe Parking, that all of a sudden now it's gonna take away this, the code enforcement. You're still not going to be able to enforce that, because you have people sleeping in their cars, sorry, trying to speed this up, sleeping in their cars that, um, are on drugs or alcohol, they're, they don't have the insurance, there's still not gonna be a place for them to go. So the code enforcement is still not gonna be able to be upheld. Thank you.
I'm sure you all recall that I spent a great deal of time trying to get Safe Parking established a couple of years ago with unfortunately no results. So I, I wanna say first, it's not about criminals. Uh, I talked to an awful lot of people that slept in their cars and trucks and RVs. I found that there were two different mentalities between those that were in cars and trucks, and those that were in RVs. What it is about is local control, and the public having the opportunity to know what's happening in their neighborhood, be it residential or business. If this program has no impacts, then a free CUP will have no adverse effect on moving the program forward. It may have some cost for the city, but Lord knows we have lots of costs. But it does provide that transparency and the opportunity for people to know what's going on. Secondly, a CUP provides a safety net, a process that is, when a Safe Parking location is approved and unforeseen problems develop, and I'm sure they will, because surprises come up, residents and businesses have an opportunity to talk to the Planning Commission and the city staff, and have a public hearing, and get the conditions of approval corrected to eliminate the problem. Not necessarily to end the Safe Parking at a location, but to make the corrections that need, are needed, so that it doesn't impact the neighborhood. Without the conditional use permit process that the past council wisely put in place, residents and businesses could wake up one morning with Safe Parking next door and have no input. So I would encourage you to incorporate all the decisions that were made by the past council into the ordinance and retain the CUP. And I wanna share one thought with you, because I've been around here a lot longer than most of you. Once upon a time, the county came to us and said, we wanna put a few low-income housing units in Lompoc. And we're good people, and we said, yes, we wanna help people. And then, because there was really no way of controlling it, we ended up with a little over seven hundred. We ended up with the largest percentage in the county compared to any other city by nearly triple. So as Councilmember Vega said, a blank checkbook has consequences. Thank you.
Do we have any written communication on this item, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we do. We received an email from DA Taylor, as well as an email from Mark Jackson. Um, they were delivered to council and staff and posted on the website.
Thank you. Just a reminder, um, if you wanna call, it's eight zero five, eight seven five, eight two zero one. Are you okay if I let a phone call come through?
Absolutely.
Awesome. Please put one of the phone calls through.
Good evening, you're live in the Lompoc City Council meeting. You have three minutes to give your public comment. Please go ahead.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Joe Garcia, I'm a resident in District Three. Um, calling today, um, in regards to what you're discussing today, I think is a noble thing that we're discussing this parking program. Um, but I do have a concern that by changing this from, um, where it's currently at to what's being requested by the same people who are also being paid to administer this program. Um, but my biggest concern tonight is hearing the advocate for this change, uh, state that the reason for this is to take the public's awareness out of this. And it sounds like the reason for wanting to do that kind of seems like it would be justified, and fortunately, though, there's no, you know, impact reports that have been done about what's these proposed places. And currently, I understand it's on, uh, city-owned property over there on I Street, um, is one place that's being proposed. Uh, however, these programs with the people that are coming, there is neighborhoods that are there, they're, if you're, the process that you're at, you, you're trying to go down or being proposed is to take those people's, uh, awareness, comments out, and to ask them to pretend that nothing's going on there, and that their input, their comments, they're not necessary, and I think that's wrong. Um, if you're gonna do the program, go about it the right way, include the public's comment, don't change this, uh, process, uh, to what is being requested, just leave it as it is, and move forward like such. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that the last of the calls? Okay. Please come forward.
I'm not as tall as John. Good evening, uh, City Council and Mayor. Chuck Madsen. I have worked in the county of Santa Barbara with the homeless and, and substance abuse and, uh, mental health issues, those with suffering from these issues for the last twelve years. This is a very important issue. I trust that the city can find a way to, uh, come to an agreement, so that the citizens and our city, uh, can move forward with this. Anytime that we have the opportunities to support those suffering in our community in a way that hasn't been provided with such an amazing organization like New Beginnings that has been successful for the past seventeen years, it's an opportunity that we shouldn't pass up. Our shelter beds are full, our residential treatment programs are full, so we don't have a lot of opportunities for those suffering in our community. So I would hope that we can come to some agreement to move this forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Floor is still open. If you would like to comment on item number five, please come forward. You have three minutes, or you may call in at eight zero five, eight seven five, eight two zero one.
Mayor, council members, I don't believe that most people here are in opposition to the Safe Parking. What they are opposed to is the lack of transparency. Each one of you, at one point or the other, has sworn to be transparent and fulfilling and representing the residents of Lompoc. However, prior to this item, you use the cover of real property negotiations to negotiate a lease. How is that transparent? Maybe it's not criminal, but it's certainly not ethical. So now you make everybody alarmed. Why are you resorting to those types of tactics? Why are you pulling such an important item and hiding it in real property negotiations? And you know what you negotiated? A dollar. So you went in secret to negotiate a dollar. That's what causes uprisings. That's what loses the faith of the people. Now you wanna take away the input of the people. That's the concern. Nobody is opposed to helping people. There are plenty of churches that will step up, there are plenty of other community members that will step up. You see it every time, you see it all over the town. That's not the issue. The issue is the transparency and how you're running the council. That needs to be corrected. Shame on you. It's a simple thing to be open and transparent and fully disclose and let all the residents participate in the process, and that is all that the residents are asking for, is full participation. And if all the things that are alleged to be true are true, there will be no issue. But if they're not, the residents will have recourse against the project. So I implore you, leave the CUP process intact, so that the residents have a voice in the process and have recourse in the event, which we're told we won't, that some negative impacts occur, or things happen. And to end, this is a classic social injustice issue again. You have the districts of higher income, higher education telling the district of the lowest education, the most minorities, "Don't worry, we're not putting it in our district right now, won't be no problem to put it in yours." Shame on you. So fix that. I would like to know how many staff members have been approved, if we're gonna put it all along, and how much money's been approved for the project to staff those people? Because you can't have multiple places if you don't have the funding for multiple staff members. Thank you.
Well, I'm Augustin Arias, I'm a citizen of Lompoc. And this was, last time I came to speak, this was what I was talking about, being somebody else's dumping ground. I understand the need to help people, that's important to everybody. The homeless problem's an important issue to everybody, and there's a lot of people trying to work at it, and I think we should participate in that, but the neighborhood that you guys are trying to propose this at, that's probably a terrible idea. You guys should be trying to rehabilitate that area. You know how many juveniles lived in that area? I understand the older people and the people that are homeless, but what about the kids that grew up in that neighborhood that can't even go outside? But yeah, you're gonna put a parking lot there with who knows who that's coming into their motorhome. I understand all the things that people hide in motorhomes. How many hiding spots are in, in a motorhome? And you're gonna let trailers park here and things of that nature in, in the center of town? How many kids live there? I understand the elderly population, the people that need the assistance, what about the kids? What about the future? They're a county organization, you got county property right there on Sweeney Road, build it in your own property. It's right outside, people in Lompoc can still get there and, and, and park there. Why's it gotta be in the center of town? Where a bunch of kids are terrified to even go outside right now, and now you're gonna put another parking lot, another obstacle, another thing? And yet, there, there are numbers of drug addiction and things of that nature. You know how many people, transients, are in this town? This week, I've, I've talked to four people that I didn't see ever in my life till this week. One came here from San Jose, got driven here by somebody. One came from Santa Barbara, got driven here by somebody. What do you think this is gonna do? Build that stuff in your county and find, if you wanna help them, find a better place in our city to do it for them and help them out. But in that neighborhood, doesn't need more. I mean, I'd, I'd tell you from a personal perspective, I, I used to run around that neighborhood, uh, as a child, and it, it wasn't what's going on now. My children don't get to run around that neighborhood, but you're gonna add to some, an area that doesn't need this right now. I mean, I understand the, the need for these people that run on hard times, I, I agree, I help when I can, I donate when I can, but what about the future of, of this city? What about rehabilitating that area for, so that they could be safe, so that they could have things, so that kids could do something? It's like you pick and choose all the time, but you're gonna add more to this place? This, the location's terrible. I tell you from somebody that grew up there, I'll tell you from somebody that works in that area all the time. They're a county organization, they got county property right outside the city limits. Build your own stuff, build your own parking lot, they could build as big as they want, it's their property. But you're giving them permission to come in here and do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any additional phone calls? Please transfer them.
Good evening, you're live in the Lompoc City Council meeting. You have three minutes to give your public comment. Please go ahead.
Thank you. I'm unable to attend tonight's meeting, but I just have a very brief comment on the Safe Parking issue. I, I understand that Safe Parking Programs are necessary, but I very strongly ask that any modifications to the Lompoc Municipal Code require that a conditional permit, conditional use permit be obtained before granting anybody permission for, uh, a parking program. And my concern here is that if any business or organization is allowed to participate without regards to their neighbors, it would dramatically decrease the quality of life for nearby residential neighborhoods. And I don't see an issue if we're, you know, putting parking in a largely commercial area, such as Walmart, or Albertson's, or Vaughn Shopping Center. Um, I don't see an issue there. But if the doctor's office, one block from my home, were to participate in a program like this, it would be a disaster. My neighborhood is already suffering from increased crime and noise and... My neighborhood is already suffering from increased crime and noise and trash and other problems caused by homeless cars and RVs that are parked nearby. And so my concern here is allowing the nearby business to encourage even more of these vehicles would not only increase the problems that we're already experiencing, lower my property values, and decrease the quality of life for everyone. And so I'm asking again that you please, please, please require those who participate in the safe parking programs obtain a conditional use permit before they're allowed to operate. I thank you very much for your time and attention to this matter.
Thank you.
Good evening, you're live in the Lompoc City Council meeting, you have three minutes to provide your public comment, please go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Katie Rounds, and I have lived in Lompoc since the early 60s. I met with the New Beginnings people last week, it was a small meeting at the Vets Hall, and we were told that this lease has already been signed, and that we were hoping that it was sometime, something that we could talk about and discuss, but we were told that it has already been leased and this lease has been signed, and there is no recourse. But I did learn that the staff for the parking area is going to only check in with the people that are parked there. They are not gonna be on site for the entire time that the people are parked there, they're just gonna check in. They did say that at the beginning of the program, they would be there more often, but after a while, they'll only be checking in once a night. I do work in a building that is right across the alley. Had we known that they were going to start this, we would not have leased that thing for five years. So I'm really disappointed in that. I did have a client that came in and told us he had heard something about city council approving that site on I Street. I do know that they did say that they would only start with five vehicles in that lot to start, and hopefully in July. That doesn't seem like it's a very huge amount of people, and I don't really know how much effect that's gonna have on our homeless people living in their vehicles. I don't know how many lots, they didn't really say. And another thing that I find a little bit confusing is that if they are looking to hide from people that are trying to get to them, we were told that New Beginnings said that the people want to stay in their neighborhoods, so I'm a little bit confused about that because on one hand, some of them are hiding from some violence or domestic abuse, but at the same time, they want to be in their neighborhoods. I'm a little bit confused, but I am really upset that we were not told, we just didn't have the option to give any input, and that kind of offends me. So thank you.
Good evening, you're live in the Lompoc City Council meeting, you have three minutes to provide your public comment, please go ahead.
Hi, um, my name is Nicole Barnick, and unfortunately for me, I literally just learned about this issue today on Facebook, and it seems like it's a done deal for the community as it stands, and that, I just want to say, is very disappointing. And I feel like if this is safe for our neighborhoods, then it should be safe for the mayor's neighborhood, and it should be safe for the council members' neighborhoods as well. So why aren't their neighborhoods considered in this? Everything is hunky-dory, everything is great and safe and beautiful and kumbaya, then why doesn't it happen in certain neighborhoods in this town? It always seems to go into the same neighborhoods, and that's very unfortunate and very unfair, in my opinion. Why aren't other areas considered? Why aren't the properties in the mayor's neighborhood considered in this? If she feels that this is so safe, then let her step up and show us how safe it is. Let these families see how they like their children around this, and how they like their wives around this, how they like to walk their dogs in this type of a situation. I feel like it's a safety issue, I'm wondering what safety procedures are in place on this? Is there additional insurance that the city has to pay for this? What, somebody gets hurt? What if one of them get hurt on the property? Does the city get sued? Are we liable as citizens for this? How long can they stay? Do they come and go? We need answers. I, like I said, I know I'm new, and I just found out about this, so some of those answers may already have been discussed, but I'm certainly hoping that transparency comes through now, apparently on the back end of this decision, so that the rest of us can see what's going on, who made this decision for us, who voted yes, who voted no? And also, as somebody else said, I think the conditional use permit is a very necessary requirement in something like this. It would happen with any of us if we wanted to make any changes in our own home, so if you're making a change in the neighborhood, let's get real and make it as safe as possible. Everybody has said that we do want to help other people, and we do, but we should all be involved in the decisions that affect our neighborhoods and our families. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your call.
Good evening, you're live in the Lompoc City Council meeting, you have three minutes to provide your public comment, please go ahead.
Yes, Lompoc resident, Brendan Bridge. Um, I, you know, I certainly can appreciate the program, I have not heard much negative review from what we've had in the past, uh, it being introduced into Lompoc. I do find it slightly disingenuous that we so quickly are going to waive fees, that we so quickly are gonna push aside CUPs for outside organizations, but we can't get our own house straight. So I really do implore, just like many of the other residents and callers and speakers, that we keep the transparency open, and that we maintain focus on our community and sustaining that in a way that makes us trust what the staff is saying that they can auto approve, because it's more important that we support our local nonprofits than we do continually introducing freedom to the outside. So I would also like to add that when we discussed adding the additional low-income housing, police and fire both spoke up many times saying that these programs do introduce more calls, not saying criminal, but as a whole, they introduce more calls. And there are zero property tax-type organizations or programs or housing. So when we look at our police and our fire saying we need more money, our facilities are disrepair, it's because we continually put in this low-income housing, we continually put in this low-income programs, and we don't really benefit the community as a whole. Even the people that need these programs, they themselves cannot sustain with a community that just gives everything away for free, including transparency. Thank you.
Thank you. Does that complete our call-ins at the moment? Okay, you're welcome to come to the podium.
You're Dean Council, Richard Smith, Lompoc resident and business owner. I wasn't gonna comment on this particular thing tonight, but when I realized that this was a county organization trying to influence our city once again, it really hit home because it, the root cause of our lack of growth and crime and all of our problems are the lack is our ability to not grow the city. We can't grow our tax base because we don't push back against the county. I don't see five advocates for Lompoc up here, I see folks that will bend at the will of the county. Nobody is willing to go fight the county to expand our town and grow our tax base. That is what will truly fix us, that's what will restore our services, pay our police and fire what they need to be paid, provide all the other services that we need, improve our infrastructure. We will never be able to do these things. All we're doing is Band-Aids all the time. Uh, you know, it's, you five should be ashamed, just like Nick said, because you're not advocates for us, because you're not fighting the county. That is who has restricted our growth, they shrunk our footprint from the 70s. It is insane what happened. I mean, we will never, nothing will ever improve, no matter what programs you propose or anything, because we're not growing the tax base. Why aren't you fighting to, to bring in the village and Mission Hills under our tax base? Fight the county for that. Why are you not fighting for Lompoc? You, I don't see five advocates for us, I'm sorry, because the real problem's the county, and you guys are just accepting a Band-Aid, and you're gonna let another county organization come into our town? They want to convince you to get rid of the CUP process to make it not transparent? I mean, folks, I mean, wake up, they're not advocates for you, they're just not. They let the counties walk all over us. You guys, you gotta realize that, otherwise, we're just gonna keep doing this, going circles all the time. No growth, Band-Aids, continued degradation. So, thank you.
Mr. Halsey, you've already spoken on this item. Thank you. I know it's been a bit of, it's been a while. Any more calls? Anyone else in the room like to come forward, other than those that have already spoken? Seeing no one rise, we will bring it back to council. To address one of the issues, I'd like to ask a question of our city attorney. While we did discuss the lease, which is not the agenda item tonight, we did address the lease in closed session, it was then moved to open session under consent calendar and was notified, and there was an opportunity to provide feedback, correct?
That's right, the lease was approved on an open session agenda.
Thank you. For our community development director, the lot that is under that is only a single location, and it was a city in-kind donation to the program in order to help them get started in the community and review and address issues they might run into with other locations as a way to clean up and propose corrections to our ordinance in order for this nonprofit, not a county, but a nonprofit that we require that provides these social services to take over, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then, last but not least, and one of you two may be able to answer it, if there's an issue after an AUP is issued, and someone in that neighborhood has a problem with what's going on in the parking lot, they can either address it with the entity that holds the parking lot or contact the city, and you would review the issue and hold New Beginnings accountable, because that is part of the process. So it's not no recourse, it's not the help being held unaccountable, correct?
Correct. So there's a whole list of rules. If they are not following any of those rules, or if things are brought to our attention and we cannot work through them with the nonprofit to get them compliant, I'm gonna pull their permit. That's the bottom line. So I, I've been very adamant with the agency, we have to be perfect in order to do a program like this. And, you know, I have no problem pulling a permit if someone's not following our rules that we've established.
And the difference between waiving a CUP is an approximate cost of $4,000 of staff time, planning commission time, staff reports compared to an AUP which is only staff time around $400.
Around there.
So we're only waiving a much lower cost than $4,000 for every time one is pulled.
Correct.
And then, probably back to our city attorney, if at some point someone is interested in where the locations are, because we are a public entity and because these permits have been issued, a request can be made to identify the locations if desired.
That's right, it'd be a public record, a list of every safe parking program that has an AUP approved in Lompoc, that'd be a public record, yes.
Thank you. Those are all my questions for clarity. Councilmember Cordova.
I just want to say a couple things. I hear what the public is saying, and I hear the concerns, and it's very conflicting for me because I'm constantly trying to find, where is the middle ground in this community? Where do we, where do we move forward, and how do we establish ordinances and regulations that we can actually enforce? Because we have a bunch of regulations and ordinances that for some reason we cannot enforce in this community, and that is frustrating for me, and I'm always looking for that way out of that constant push and pull that we have in this community. You know, when people come up here and say, "Shame on you because you're not being transparent" or "Because you're waiving fees," some of those people are the same people that come up here, and I will say, "Shame on you because you come up here asking for waiver of fees time after time again, and it doesn't matter to you then because it's to your benefit." Number two, in 2018 and 2019, in 2019, I saw it happen from this side of the dais where we've had these conversations about the safe parking program. The city of Lompoc discussed, I don't know how many locations, a park, the city, the front of the city lot. My God, there is no place in this community that we're ever gonna find a location for this. If we could just find a way to work together and establish what are the regulations that we could all live with, we could enforce our own ordinance, and we can move forward with something on this. But don't tell me that we don't waive fees for other organizations, because we just got done having a conversation this last council meeting about how the cannabis industry doesn't pay renewal fees on an annual basis. But my God, where do we draw the line? Where do we work together as a community, and where do we actually start making a change?
Councilmember Wall.
I know this is conflicting to a lot of people, and I do hear all of that, I just want to say, put it on council, we have an opportunity to address a need in our community with a group that's worked for 17 years, 17 years, thoughtfully, making adjustments, evolving as an entity, working to create systems and protocol to make it work. If you're talking about transparency, we're trying to stand up the same system that other cities are doing in our county. You can accuse us of anything you want, that's fair, but we're structurally trying to stand up the same thing they do in Goleta, same thing they're trying to do in Santa Maria, we're trying to use the same system. So no one's pulling the wool over your eyes. Part of this system works because they can keep a little bit of it under wraps, so that people can be spread out and not make an impact on the community. Worst case, if we tried this and it didn't work, you would let us know, I know that. We do have an out, and again, after giving it a little bit of a trial, a year or two, if it fails miserably, again, you'll let us know. And immediately, you have our, all of our commitment that we're out, we will not continue that effort. But if we don't bring this in, we don't try it, there is not really another option out there. There's good ideas, we can go and yell and scream at the county and insist that they do something, but we've been yelling and insisting, and that hasn't worked for a long time, so we've got to try a slightly different approach. So again, I know this room isn't gonna agree on this issue, but from my heart, I feel like we really have to make the effort, we have to try. If we fail, it's on us.
Councilmember Vega.
My biggest issue here for the residents and for the people that have contacted me is the location. This is the worst location you could find. You will devastate the neighborhood, you put it in between two schools, you put an extra preschool, these people are gonna check in, and when they move out, there's going to be traffic. There's all the parents there, they walk their kids to school, to El Camino School, they walk to Lompoc High School. I have to agree with Mr. Arias, it is the worst possible location that we could start this with. It's not about the program. We shouldn't put it in a residential neighborhood backed up to a business. So I'm not going to support this, because I don't want it to be in District 2. I do defend District 2, I do. If we're gonna play by districts, which I'm not an advocate of, I'm gonna defend Lompoc. Lompoc is a whole, we shouldn't have it in a residential, you will devastate that neighborhood. I don't care how much sugar you put on it, and there's no crime, and there's none of this, and I don't care how much city staff says, "Well, you have a recourse, leave the CUP in place if you're gonna do anything," but you, you're not gonna have recourse because it's easier said than done to come back and complain. You will be here at the council meeting complaining, someone will ask you to come up to public comment, you're going to leave and nothing's gonna happen. I can tell you, this is too, the county's too large for their programs when they come in and throw money in Lompoc, and then the welcome mat looks bigger to someone else when you come in here. We don't want to invite more people here. We had a police officer just state, "There's people still being dropped off here." We're not so naive that we say yes because someone sugarcoats it and uses... because someone sugarcoats it and uses compassion. And, and, and they start making you feel bad, and this and that. We, it's not, let's be real. Let's have an honest, mature conversation here. And you know exactly what's gonna happen to that neighborhood that's already suffering from COVID, as far as people in hardships and all this stuff. All of us are suffering, but District Two? You guys all know about District Two. Let's not add to their hardships.
Councilmember Cordova.
I, 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 I agree. But might I also remind you that in 2019, when it was proposed to be here at City Hall, right next to the Police Department, the issue was, how is it gonna look? How is it going to look in our community that we have a safe parking program in front of City Hall? My God, that's embarrassing. So, today, it's a whole different story. I get it. Again, what I'm not hearing, though, is solution for them. How do we come forward with a solution? Because whether it's stigma, and we're embarrassed by it, or whether it's the fact that it's not, it shouldn't be in that. Whatever it is, there's always gonna be issues of why it shouldn't happen. What I would like to ask, if the New Beginnings ladies are still here, I just have one more question for them. In other, I don't know if you want to give them the opportunity to come back.
You need to come to the microphone. Thank you.
In other, you mentioned that you have this program in other cities. In those other cities, and in all the parking programs that you have, are all those AUPS, or are they CUPs, or is there a mixture?
None. We do not have permits that are required in Santa Barbara. They amended their ordinance in the city of Santa Barbara, in the county of Santa Barbara, to allow our program to operate.
And you're saying?
Permits.
And you're saying that you cannot bring this program to Lompoc unless it's an AUP?
That is the way that the program has been set up to move forward here in this community.
Here in this community?
Yes. In working with city staff, we have, the, the ordinance has been written so that there is an AUP, a CUP in place. And now is being proposed to be amended to an AUP.
And that's exactly my issue. That you have a council that already accepted in 2018, or whatever, a CUP process, and they waived the fees. I understand, Kristi, what your concern is. But I think that, being that there is such a heavy concern from this community with regards to how the county operates. And, and, and you are not county. You are a nonprofit organization, correct?
Correct. We are a nonprofit.
You are just funded with, with grants or money that comes from county, or?
From county, and city, and state, and federal.
So please understand that. That they're not county. They are a nonprofit organization. But I get the concern of this community. And, and so, I, I think that if the issue is whether it's a CUP or an AUP, we really need to consider that. How long also are people permitted to be in the program? Once they're in and they pass all the rigorous qualifications and requirements to even be able to park their car there at night? Which, by the way, kids are not crossing the street from 10 to 6. How long are they able to be in the program?
They have to renew their permit with us monthly. So we have at minimum, monthly contact with every individual enrolled.
But is there a maximum amount of time? Or can somebody renew every month for a year? And this is basically their means of, of a home?
At this time, we do not have a cap. Because we recognize that the subsidized housing waitlists are seven to 10 years long in the county. And it takes folks differing, differing amounts of time to be able to stabilize, regain employment, and regain housing. So we do not penalize them for taking longer. So we work with them. And sometimes it does take 12 months to work with them to be able to save up and improve their credit score in order to get back into an apartment.
Okay, understood. That's transparency. Knowing that there is no cap. Another question that I have for you. What is the criteria? I know that, that there's a whole list of application requirements, you know? And it says, you know, that you're gonna have security, staff training. It says all of this. But there was a comment or a concern with regards to, is there security on the lot from 10 to 6 every night?
No, we do not have a staff member onsite the entire time that clients are in the lot. We will have a staff member do random rounds in the middle of the night. And we will have staff onsite for several hours at the beginning of the lot opening to ensure that it is running smoothly and that community member concerns are being heard and being addressed. And in that way, we will have onsite presence more so. And as we see that staff members simply watching people sleep, then we will tone down the amount of time that the staff member is just sitting in the lot.
Okay, now we know. Another question that I had, and this is mainly, I think, to, for us as staff, or for staff. It does say in Section J that, "City's right to inspect. The program manager shall allow the city representatives to enter and inspect the program site during business hours to ensure compliance with this section." If we really care, and we really want to put the concerns of our community on the balance, and we want to make sure that, that this is working, and that this is feasible, we should be adopting a regular inspection program. Especially at the beginning, to ensure that the minds of our community members is at peace. And that we are making sure that the program is working the way it's supposed to be working in our community. So, I mean, I'm not against the parking program because I want, I would like to see it happen. I've been waiting for this to come back for such a long time. Because, again, I was told that we cannot enforce our ordinance unless we have a safe parking program. So unless, Lompoc, we fund it ourselves, and we put something together, and we are able to actually regulate it ourselves. Or whether we allow somebody else to do it, and we just make sure that we are doing our due diligence as a city. We need to do something.
Thank you for answering those questions.
Could I just ask one question of her while she's up here?
You are next on the list, Mr. Ball.
Thank you so much. Again, real quick, I just, just want to put it out there for thought. If you disagree with me, no problem. I'm, I'm disagreeable sometimes. For 17 years, if you've been here as a local, you read the newspaper, pay attention to the local news. There's been something missing for 17 years, as you've done that. Headline after headline about devastated neighborhoods from a safe parking program run by New Beginnings. The reason you have not heard of that devastation in neighborhoods is because, why?
Because we are a solution to the problem that is already in so many communities across the state, across the country.
Thank you. So, again, can we guarantee that we will not have an issue that doesn't exist in other places? No. But should we make the same attempt to try to change the direction of our community and the way that we address homelessness? If this was a question of doing it with a new group, a new nonprofit, with no track record that just started last year, you'd get a lot more hesitation up here. But we have a chance, an opportunity, to work with a partner that actually has tried and evolved, and has a system. If we don't want that here, okay. But, again, we don't, we are not in the seat to be able to stand up a program like this on our own. If you think the city of Lompoc is in better shape, that has a better track record to stand up a safe parking program, let me know how that's gonna work out. Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you. Councilmember Vega.
I'd like to go back to the comment that Councilwoman Cordova meant. It's another cheap shot on a passed decision. So let me self-defend. Since they're gonna yell and scream and use compassion, let me tell you why that decision came, that we didn't want City Hall, which I voted against it for safe parking. The reason was, it's in our business district. We had public comment, people did not want it in our main street. The other, the other reason was, safe parking was gonna start at 7:00 PM here. 7:00 PM in our parking lot, well, we have commission meetings, we have city council meetings. So that's, that's one of the other reasons. The other reason was, the city wanted to hear is because they said it was close to the Police Department. It's not fair to our public safety people to be dealing with the mental health and the drug issue in our parking lot right here, just because they're there. That should have been a county responsibility. They deal with mental health, they fund it, they get the funding. That's why we're getting all of this. Because the county has pretty much mandated what Lompoc can do. As you heard, they don't have to get any permits. They can remodel a building, they can place homeless and helpless wherever they want. Without even asking us. And then we're over here bypassing the CUP process, or being asked to bypass a process that provides transparency to our residents so they'll know what's gonna move next to them. So I'm gonna say, there was a good reason for it, so that cheap shot doesn't fly. This is what I say. I can yell too, and I can say something, but it's a cheap shot. It doesn't hold any water. I don't want it in the district. The people that I've said, that have come over there, we do not want to devastate that neighborhood. And regardless of the timing of everything, there's no restrictions, there's no guidelines. And there's, there isn't any security that's been proven to show that it's not going to devastate that neighborhood with children. As the police officer, Mr. Chip Arias, has stated. And you guys are so pro-public safety, why don't you listen to the police officer?
So I'd like to bring the discussion back to the matter at hand. Rather than discussing where the program is located or not located at the moment. The goal is to locate the program across our community. I am mayor at large. Every district is my district, including the one I live in. And yes, I expect a safe parking program to be in my neighborhood. In fact, I am asking staff to look at an area for RVs in my neighborhood. Because these smaller lots don't have space for RVs. This lot that we did sign a contract with is simply going to be vehicles. It's not big enough, it doesn't have the access. It will be five vehicles, not RVs. So I'm absolutely looking at, how does this get distributed across our entire community? Again, we are a very compact, small community. This problem faces all of us. All of our neighborhoods are affected by high crime rate. All of our neighborhoods are affected by homeless issues. All of our neighborhoods and businesses are affected by those that are barely holding on. So the transparency here is, we are trying to put a program in place. We are trying to make it as cost-efficient as possible, not only for ourselves, because of the burden of that workload and the costs associated with it. That if we waive those fees, that cat still has to be covered. And that money comes out of your general fund. So if I'm waiving a $4,000 fee versus a $400 fee, I'm saving your money because that cost still has to be covered. So again, this is a program that we need in order to enforce other issues we have regarding illegal parking. I won't call it homeless parking, I'll call it illegal parking, illegal dumping. Those that are mistreating our community, those that are abusing it, that are dumping illegally, that are parking where they shouldn't be parking. This program allows us to enforce that because the requirement says you must have an implemented safe parking program. All we've had is one on the books. So we haven't been able to enforce anything because we actually haven't implemented a program. We don't have the staffing. We aren't a social service. We have an organization that wants to do this. So I'd like to get it back to the conversation about the actual item on here. And my support of it is simply for ease of implementation. If there are issues, I absolutely expect our city staff to bring it to us. If there are issues, I absolutely expect New Beginnings to bring it to us. If those of you participating in the program have issues, you absolutely should report to us. Those of you with the neighborhood and notice suddenly three or four cars or an RV parking in your neighborhood church, and you feel like it's noisy or loud, you can call the city and find out if it is part of the program. And you absolutely can complain, and we will go out and investigate it. Again, you ask us to solve these problems of, I feel like this RV is always parking on my street, and I don't know who they are, and they're dumping on the street. I want to solve that problem. But I also need to make sure we're respectful of those that are down on their luck and need a little assistance. And because of our lack of housing, can't get into housing for 12 months to 18 months. Which is about the average. The last time New Beginnings gave us a presentation was 12 to 18 months to get somebody housed. So we've had a program presentation by them. They are working with us to adopt a program that means they can come take care of this and work with us on it. That's the transparency. That is why we're having this discussion. And so, I think it's really important to respect the organization that's willing to do the workload that we don't have the bandwidth to, but desperately need. Provide an opportunity to prove they can provide it. And, as Councilmember Ball has said, hold us accountable if it starts to fail. But if we just keep pointing fingers and talking about it where it is, or where it shouldn't be, or who might do it, it turns into a NIMBY issue, and it doesn't get solved, and it goes stagnant, and the problems continue. And we lose out on the funding that has been provided by the county, who's responsible for this issue, to this nonprofit that is a social services that has 17 years of success. So again, I think it's not about pointing fingers at each other. It's not about pointing fingers as to what district it is or isn't going to be in. It's about addressing a solution, providing it an opportunity to be successful, holding it accountable, and holding ourselves accountable. And we absolutely expect all of you to do that. Councilmember Cordova.
Okay, so, I'll stop taking cheap shots when I start hearing solutions rather than just opposition. So I'm gonna put a motion on the floor, and let's see if it goes. Again, I'm only one vote on this council. I don't pretend to be the, the only person that has any authority up here. I say that we accept the New Beginnings' safe parking program. I say that we leave it as a CUP. Because that is what it was intended before. I say that we waive the fees as it was intended to be before. That we take the opportunity to review, revise, and enforce the illegal parking that is our, our existing ordinance that is taking place on our streets right now. Because the whole objective would be to help clean up the streets. I say that we limit the number of locations based on the data that we get from the organization. For example, in their program plan, it states that they are going to know where these people are coming from. They have to, they have to register, they have to have a driver's license, they have to have insurance, they have to have all these things, right? So how many of these people are actually gonna be Lompoc people? We're gonna know. And that report needs to come to the staff. And the staff needs to inform the council of how many of these parking spaces are actually being used by local Lompoc residents versus people coming in from out of city or out of, you know, the area altogether. I, I would like to see the number of overnight spaces also be limited. And I would also like for staff to adopt a regular inspection. Not just whenever you think it's necessary, because that may never happen. But that we actually adopt a regular inspection. Whether it, whether it be monthly, quarterly, whatever the case is. But that we, that we actually say that we're adopting a regular inspection of the, of the facility, of the program. And that's my motion.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah. I hope I get along with my new neighbors. Could you repeat your motion?
Stacy, did you catch that by any chance?
So Councilwoman Cordova has motioned to approve the program with the continuation of the CUP process. Limit the number of locations. Have New Beginnings provide a report of the persons utilizing the program to staff. And that information be delivered to council. Limit the number of spaces. And provide a regular staff would do a regular inspection of the site. Whether it's annually, monthly, quarterly, I'm not sure which.
I guess the next question would be, is, we're gonna wind up with another staff report on this so that we will know what our limit will be on locations. Obviously, the resolution is gonna have to be rewritten to include the CUP process versus the administrative process. Like you say, it's the only way we can enforce street parking is to provide parking. It's just the way it is. So, I, I will give you a second on that. But I'm gonna make a contingent that the, we get the follow-on staff reports so that it meets the requirements of how many safe parking are we gonna have? There was another variable in there, Stacy.
Variable of the spaces, or?
Or number of spaces, thank you.
Yes.
So, you know, I, I don't want this to amass and take over all of ours, you know? The way this is, if it passes as it is, the work with the nonprofit, it's gonna incur costs. Anything the government does is gonna cost, it's just unfortunate. Public input would be lost if we approved this. So, we should have done something long ago where we could have worked on this parking issue we had two years ago.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
There might be an issue if, if it does go back to the CUP.
So I, you know, the, in the beginning, when we started this whole process, I was really excited because we were finally going to be able to have the agency that is the most versed in this sector to come in here and run a safe parking program, which was something I was tasked with getting an estimate for what it would cost the city to have them come in here if we funded them. come in here if we funded them. You might all recall that was a few hundred thousand dollars. So all of a sudden, they had this money from the county that they were getting and we had this site and it was a perfect option. So I was real excited. I brought them in. We went through it. The hiccup was that CUP, regardless of whether it's fee-based or not. This, they were hearing here, you're going to hear it Planning Commission and they won't get a CUP approved. So I've been told by the executive director that a CUP is a deal breaker. They're not required to do it in any other jurisdiction. So they're, they're not used to operating that way and they don't think it is feasible. So applying all these rules, you may just want to return back to the way it is right now where they could apply for a CUP and see where they land, see where the Planning Commission conditions them, what requirements they place on it. So I hate for you guys to go through this process of creating all these rules in your motion and it's for nothing.
Just, just for the record, Mayor, that may be the opinion of New Beginnings, but there may be other operators of safe parking programs that would be happy to apply for a CUP and go through the CUP process. So we're not only talking about New Beginnings here in the one site. We are talking about safe parking program sites throughout the city from other applicants that might apply in the future. So it's the council's discretion whether to require a CUP or not for any safe parking operator.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay, Councilmember Cordova has turned off her light. Councilmember Vega.
A couple of clarifications if I could. Councilwoman Cordova said we would be approving the safe parking program. Is that in fact true as part of her motion? And the other part of it would be approving the safe parking, because I don't see that here. And also, again, I'm just referencing what the city attorney said, by leaving it alone and letting someone apply for the CUP process, you're not bypassing the Planning Commission. So I think that's a better way. But just clarification, Brian, if you could, on, are we approving a safe parking program? Are we just approving the, whatever's going on here with the county and New Beginnings?
Well, this is only the code amendment would enable the safe parking program. So you're not approving any.
So we're not really approving it, correct? Because that's what I kind of thought.
Correct. Just the code amendment. I, I did want to just suggest a recommendation that's a little different than how the meeting is going. We also have another process called a minor use permit. A minor use permit would still allow the public to have a hearing here at City Hall. It would not be before the Planning Commission. It would be a meeting that we have here similar to smaller projects. We've been doing this in Long Polk for a very long time. But the director, Kristi Alarcon, would still have the final say. But that would be a noticed meeting. A minor use permit is noticed. People could come. They could give their input, their concerns through the minor use permit. So I just want to make sure, especially since people are concerned about transparency, that is another avenue or another tool in your tool belt if you want to consider the minor use permit. Obviously, the fee hasn't been the biggest issue. It's been more of the public being able to provide comments and participate. They could participate during the minor use permit process. But again, it would be up to the director, but of course, the director's position or determination could be appealed and then it would have to go to the Planning Commission.
Yeah. I, I personally, I think that the CUP process should stay in place and, and make everyone go through the Planning Commission just like everyone else. Because there are people that, yes, the transparency issue is one thing, but let the Planning Commission come in there and put any kind of restrictions and see whatever. If it's a deal breaker, it's a deal breaker. But I think that probably they're there to make it work. I've seen the Planning, Planning Commission in action. They're not there to deny anybody. They're just there to, to do whatever, similar to what the city staff does, you know? Sometimes you guys play with landscaping and people are going, well, I don't want rock here and I want wood here. I believe they're going to do the same thing with that same process. So thank you.
Mr. Halverson, the Planning Commission reviewed this amendment at their last meeting, correct? And, or in April?
Yes, last month.
And they approved these changes because they themselves saw the advantage of it not having to come to the Planning Commission for every single permit.
Yes, Mayor, they were not concerned about this type of action coming to them. I didn't, I didn't see any major concerns. So yeah, you are correct. They recommended approval and it wasn't, they didn't have any issues with the administrative use permit.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Cordova.
What happens with the lease with New Beginnings? And again, just to reiterate on that, my understanding is, is that they, the lease was a period of time to allow them the opportunity to develop the program, to make the, the improvements to the building and get it ready to get it started. Is that correct or?
Yes. The lease with New Beginnings states that they have to begin their use, start operating within six months after the lease was executed. I believe that's October.
And they've already began doing site improvements. We have advised them to wait until after tonight's council meeting to really invest those dollars because they're on the hook for those. The way those work is they spend them and invest in your community and then the county reimburses them. So we did tell them, try not to spend too much because if they don't get this program going, they, they lose that money. And for a nonprofit organization, that's significant.
So if they don't get started within six months after the lease was signed, then the lease will terminate. And if a CUP is required, they will have to apply for the CUP and get the CUP approved all within six months and start operating, or else their lease will terminate.
So if they don't agree, if, if the motion that's on the floor was to pass, let's just say, but they don't, but New Beginnings doesn't agree to those terms because it, let's say it's more costly for them to run the program the way that we're asking for it to be ran, then what happens with that lease? They choose to walk away and any money that they've invested into the building is lost?
That's correct, basically, yes.
I do like the suggestion by our planning director, Brian Halverson, about an MUP. Would you be willing to consider an MUP as an interim solution? Because that is a public notice. It's just smaller and it doesn't involve the Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission has already said they don't see the need for it to come back to them.
Because, is that something that can be considered? City Attorney?
Yes. What's on the agenda is considering how to regulate safe parking uses and CUPs, AUPs, MUPs are all up for consideration.
Okay. So because the Planning Commission has said, listen, we're okay with staff handling it. We see the benefit of this program and they unanimously approved to send it and gave us that recommendation, I would accept an MUP. I think that that's a good way to collaborate and I do appreciate, Brian, you bringing that to our attention. I was like trying to look forever for another way and, and I'm glad that you were able to bring that forward. I would be okay with it. I don't know if Councilmember Starbuck would be okay with it.
No, I'm going to pull my second.
I will give you a second on that adjustment. Councilmember Vega.
I do have one comment. I do, and I have been approached by one of the planning commissioners that had they understood what was coming up, which one of them and maybe a couple of them, it was their first meeting, they would do a reconsideration of their vote on approving because they really didn't know what they were doing. Okay? And I understand it's a vote, but I want to be honest with you, that they, from what I'm told, they would have reconsidered. I was approached by someone, by one of the planning commissioners afterwards and they asked to do a site visit and wanted to know where it was at. So it's kind of, it's unfortunate that you can come in on such an important item and not know exactly what you're doing, you know, yet because you're not, just not fully informed. But I can, I can tell you that there would be a reconsideration of that vote, whether it's by majority or not. But I'm sure there probably would be a couple of them that would reconsider the vote. And I know that's not what we're dealing with, Councilwoman Cordova, but I wanted to mention that, okay? Because we all know that we sometimes send our commissioners in, our committee members, unprepared. So I would probably have to take the hit on something like that. But the idea would be, I, I have a feeling they would have a change of heart because they did not understand what they were voting for.
All right. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any questions by staff?
Yes. So as I understand the motion, it's a motion to introduce the ordinance with an amendment to require an MUP instead of a AUP. And then Councilmember Cordova's additional amendments that she asked for with regard to the regular inspections, et cetera, are those also part of the motion?
Yes. But I, and I wanted to make sure, Stacy, that you had captured my very first one is that the city also review, revise, and, and begin to enforce the existing ordinance or the, what would potentially be a revised ordinance for illegal parking and that we actually start to enforce that since we would now be providing a safe parking program in our city. That was my number one thing.
And for clarification from our city attorney, until we actually have enough spaces available for expected inability to park, we can't enforce it until the program has stood up at a level that wouldn't be contested in court as five spaces isn't enough to enforce, correct?
Well, five spaces is enough to enforce if one is available.
Oh, okay. But they have to have available spaces is what the, is what the, okay.
It's what the, the case law says.
Thank you. I was trying to think of the term case law says. Okay. So as long as, once it's set up and we have the spaces available and there's always space available, if there's no space available, we start to get into trouble. Okay. Councilmember Cordova.
And then that we limit the number of parking spaces, that we limit the number of locations. But again, that, so when a second location is coming on, that's going to be, that's going to come forward because now it's an MUP. So that's going to come forward. We're going to know when a second location is trying to rise. That we get, I, I don't think we need to know names. We just need to know, verify addresses, how many, what's the percentage of these people that are actually residents versus out-of-towners so that we have that information. And, and that the city staff regularly inspect, so adopt an inspection schedule. If it, I don't, I don't know. I don't know if it, this needs to be a monthly thing or if this needs to be a quarterly thing, but just having it on there as we, we can inspect is not enough for me. I want to know when.
So Mayor, if I may, a question was just brought up about the inspections. We currently don't have anybody available at this time that are inspectors. We don't have even a, we have one person in building who's our building official, our plan checker and our building inspector. So that will make it difficult to try and find a person to go out and do the inspections at this point.
Would you be comfortable with an?
What I could add, Councilmember Cordova, is in the, and I'm, I'm sorry, I don't see the attachments in front of me, but in the actual, like, agreement, so to the lease, in the agreement on the lease piece, which you guys approved, I don't know, a while back ago, there was a quarterly report that I was requiring of the nonprofit operator. And the types of things I was asking in that report were number of persons served, number of bed nights, a number of vehicles that were, what do you call it, like first timers type in the system, and then a number of Santa Barbara County residents since that is one of their qualifiers. And as well as number of people who recently employed, obtained housing, moved on to something else. And then there was a narrative section where I wanted them to address if there were any concerns that had, or had, you know, come up. And those could be land concerns, property concerns, and then obviously if there were any client issues. And then my other item that I was going to add to that was, everybody knows about the code concern, citizen concern form, which, and if you don't know, they all come to me. And so I just figured I'd add another box on that and just kind of, and put safe parking program or something to that nature. So that if people in the community are driving by and they see something or if there's something that pops up, you know, they could easily go on their phone, fill out that form, and I'm going to get that notification. And then the next day, I'm calling up Christine and saying, hey, what's going on? I got this complaint. And then lastly, we are intending to collaborate with PD and the permit that will go in people's vehicles that shows they participated in the program, that will be shared with PD, what that permit looks like, so they can easily identify it. And then number of participants and things of that nature will also be shared with PD. That way they can utilize it in whatever manner is necessary. So kind of help communicate on all of those levels.
So what you're proposing is to potentially add the quarterly report to this set, not just to the lease. And if something on that quarterly report either triggers you or council's review of it, to do a spot check?
I could do that. Another option, something that's super crazy is our annual affordable housing monitoring. We can add that to it, you know? It's just Chanel, but there's over 300 affordable housing units we look at right now on an annual basis. We go out and we do some massive review, not just of the actual units themselves, but we also have to look at the agency and are they, are they still doing well and should they be operating? So we have a lot of things we monitor. It's up to you how you'd like us to fit it in. I, I am a little nervous to say, oh, sure, I'll do that every month because it's going to be me doing it. I, I can't ask that of my one planning manager or my part-time staff. So it would be challenging.
Mayor, if I may, what I'll, what I'll do is I'll just, we have in the proposed budget coming up on the 13th, or Thursday, we're going to be talking about that again. I don't know what day it is. We will have in the proposed budget, a code compliance person, a neighborhood preservation specialist, we're calling them. If that was to pass, that could be the person that could take that over. In the meantime, I can just go ahead if, because this probably won't start for another few months, but if it does get going, I'll just take that on and go out and do once a month or once a quarter, whatever it is, until that person actually comes online.
Councilmember Cordova, what do any of those options sound appealing for your?
I like the idea of including the quarterly report to the council because I think that's important. But again, I want to reiterate, I don't just want to know the number of people that are using it that are county residents. I want to know how many people are actually from Long Polk and how many people are actually outside of Long Polk. I think that's important for us to know. But also, so this lease is currently right now for a year. They have to kick it off prior to the six-month mark, which would leave them six months to operate. What is the renewal of this? How is this set up right now? Does it have to come before the council again in order to renew?
If you give me a minute, I can look at the lease. I'm not sure off the top of my head.
Just because I think that if, if, that gives almost like a six-month trial period for us to know whether this is functioning properly in our community or not. And then if it, if it, if the renewal requires for it to come back to the council, then we'll be here in six months to determine whether this is a program that worked and has kicked off and is working in our community or not.
So I just looked at the lease and it says that there is an automatic one-year renewal unless the city gives a notice of non-renewal 90 days before the expiration of the term. So if it's not working out, we would just have to give a notice of non-renewal three months before the term is about to end.
Okay. That only gives them three months to operate under, under, which might not be enough time. But, but at the worst-case scenario, we're stuck for an additional 12 months. And again, it's still serving a process or a service in our community.
Councilmember Cordova, we're not stuck for another 12 months. That lease has a condition in it that states at any point that they're not performing, we can remove that. We can cancel their lease at any point in time.
Beautiful. Done and done.
Is that clear enough for you, Madam Clerk?
Did you decide on how often you wanted the inspections to happen? Quarterly?
Monthly.
Monthly. Okay. And the reports will be delivered to council via memo?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. All right. All those adjustments, I second it.
All right, all those adjustments, I second it. Councilmember Vega.
Two questions. City Attorney, does the Planning Commission get another shot at this once the council approves this, as far as the reconsideration of a vote?
No, this does not need to go back to the Planning Commission, because the Planning Commission has already considered what type of permit.
So they don't get another reconsideration, is what you're saying, once the council approves it, is what you're saying, if somebody was to bring that up?
Once the council approves this ordinance, then it's the law. It does not go back to planning.
Thank you. I'd like to make a substitute motion. I really like a lot of the things that Councilwoman Cordova has put in hers, but I still think we shouldn't bypass the CUP process, regardless of whatever the time it costs, or whatever, because one of the things she's asking for is restrictions and oversight and monitoring, and that's what the Planning Commission does, you know, with staff, you know, why would we not, why would we want to bypass it just because it might cost them a few more dollars? I think that's part of our policing of this ordinance, instead of letting us kind of push it on community development. I think the Planning Commission can put in reviews and things that can come back. So I don't think that that should be something that should be bypassed. Otherwise, why do we have a Planning Commission here? If we don't count on them or trust them to vet a project and say, "How many parking spaces do we see?" And then they go through the guidance of Mr. Halverson, who's empowered there with running those meetings. I just would like to make a substitute motion, that we keep the CUP in place, move forward with the changes and conditions that Councilwoman Cordova put in there, because those are great, those are great ideas as far as having restrictions and limitations and everything, but I think at the same time, those restrictions and limitations and capacities are going to be monitored by the Planning Commission through Mr. Halverson. The idea that we're gonna shortcut it because these people don't like it, again, the city attorney said that there are other programs that do use the CUP process, but we're not, we don't want anybody to sweat, or go over a couple of speed bumps, but we'll require a lot of other people to do this, so I think that that process should stay in place. So that's my motion, that the, with restriction, but I like the CUP process to stay in place.
Seeing no one second that, the substitute motion fails, and we're back to the motion on the floor by Councilmember Cordova. Any other questions by staff? Oh, Councilmember Cordova.
One more question. And again, this doesn't guarantee that New Beginnings is gonna agree to all these terms, so if they back out and they say, "We're not doing this with you guys, we're making all these changes, and we don't have anybody at the table to run this program."
Okay. All right, so, ready to vote? Let's vote. And that passes three to two. All right. Seeing that it is 9:20, we will take a five-minute break and come back to item six after five minutes.
We will now reconvene for item number six, which is also a public hearing, consideration of Planning Commission recommendation for general plan text amendment GP 2101, to delete the Economic Development Committee from the 2030 general plan adoption of resolution number 6410 (21). And we have our planning manager, Brian Halverson, for the presentation.
I think, but I'm not going, I'm not a betting man, this might, item might be a little quicker. So let's jump into it. Previous amendment was for zoning code amendments and municipal code, but this is for the general plan, so relating to the Economic Development Committee. So get into a little bit of history here. On September 15th of 2020, the council adopted a resolution, that was 636120. This action eliminated the Economic Development Committee from the commission's committees' and board's handbook. So by doing that, we created a, an inconsistency which we're trying to clean up tonight in our general plan, and I'll just read you real quickly one of the inconsistencies. It's in the economic development element of the general plan, it's policy 3.6. That policy says, "The city shall appoint an economic development committee whose focus is to improve the Long Poak economy. The economic development committee shall create and update annually a strategic plan for economic growth, and then coordinate this plan with other city commissions that have a vested interest in the plan." So taking that into consideration, in order to have consistency in our 2030 general plan, there's a picture of it, we have, we had to go and look and see what implementation measures, policies, goals that might be included. 3.6 is the one I just read, we also have an implementation measure, and we also have an implementation measure in the land use element as well. So this went before the Planning Commission last month, kind of like the other item I presented, and the Planning Commission recommendation was to delete policy 14, but they recommended, instead of deleting the other items, which is 11 and policy 3.6, they wanted to make some slight revisions to those particular sections of the general plan. So this is basically a strikeout and underline of what the Planning Commission recommended. So they wanted to keep some of that policy in our general plan, and specifically, of course, deleting the Economic Development Committee, but adding the following wording, "The city shall work with proper and competent organizations." That's the, that's the section they added, "to create and update annually a strategic plan for economic growth, and then coordinate this plan with other city commissions that have a vested right." And that same language was carried over to implementation measure 11. So again, proper and competent was the word they, the wording they chose. So, the Economic Development Committee, although it was important, and some may still think it is, it's not required by law, and the policies and goals of the economic development element can still be accomplished without the EDC. There are no references to the EDC in the zoning code. Other than that, cutting to the chase here, our staff recommendation is to consider the Planning Commission recommendations, that added wording in those that I just presented, adopt resolution number 641021, amending the 2030 general plan, deleting all references to the Economic Development Committee, or provide other direction to staff. And that does conclude my presentation. I will say this, kind of like the other item, I am not an expert on economic development. The Economic Development Division, as many know, does not exist anymore. We have the Community Development Division with, which Kristi Alarcon heads up, with several divisions, but the Economic Development Division does not exist anymore. So that concludes my presentation for that item, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Cordova.
So, we won't get into the fact that we don't have an Economic Development Committee or a department, a division within our city, because we could be here all night, I could literally talk about it all night, and I'm not gonna do that. However, I do have a question. How many changes are we allowed in the general plan?
Four per year.
Four per year?
Yeah.
And, and I know we still have to have public comment on this, but I would like to keep this really short, and ask that we may consider waiting until after the budget season, pushing this back and bringing it back after budget, so that in, I'm assuming that during the budget process, we're gonna discuss possibilities for what, what we could have at City Hall, or whether we're going to approve more funding for an outside agency to do. And so I would hate to make the change in the general plan, and then have to come back and make it again before the end of the year, because through the budget process, we chose something different, or, or not. So, I don't know, I just want to put that out there and save us a little bit of time, but I know we still have to go to public comment.
Thank you for that. Any questions for staff? Seeing no questions, we will go to public comment on this item. If you would like to speak on item number six, you may either come to the podium for your three minutes, or you may call in at 805-875-8201. Madam Clerk, did we have any written communication on this item?
No, ma'am, not on this one.
Thank you. The number to call is 805-875-8201, and remember to mute your TV, PC, or radio when you call. If you're in the room and would like to speak on the item, you are more than welcome to come to the podium for your three minutes. Seeing no one call in, and no one rise for this issue, I'll bring it back, and Councilmember Cordova, you have the floor again.
Again, I'm not challenging the decision that was already made to remove economic development. I don't want to have that conversation tonight, I think that would be a waste of our time. I would just like for the council to consider the fact that, because we're about to go into budget season, is it possible that we just push this back until after budget season so that we can determine if during that budget process, there's a council decision to reestablish or to not further fund an outside agency, then I would hate to make the changes, take one of our four chances to make changes to the general plan, and then, and then have to redo it again. I'm just trying to save us some time and some money.
Well, I, I agree, because only allowed four changes per year, and we are about to start budget discussion. I would support postponing the public hearing. Is that what we would request in order to do this, Council City Attorney? Is we would ask for a postponement to say, do we need to declare a definitive time, or just say, once we have agreed to a budget?
I think it'd be difficult to select a date, when it might be after the budget to come back, so maybe just postpone it until after the budget cycle, and then we'll re-notice the public hearing and bring it back.
Okay. So I would be in support of that.
That is a motion.
All right, and I'll give you a second. Councilmember Vega.
I'd like to make a substitute motion, that we accept the recommendation, unless Mr. Halverson or the city attorney can tell us Halverson or the city attorney can tell us there's a, a cost to doing this and then changing it back, okay? I know you guys are ready for the text amendment change, which I don't see a problem with planning commission recommendations. You guys are probably ready to make it happen, but to change it back after budget, Brian, is that something you can kind of refer to if you, since you have four changes a year?
I'm going to take a stance on this, but it doesn't mean that it's right, but I, I think it would be better to hold instead of changing something and go back. We have a lot on our plate right now, the planning division, and so it would add extra work if we changed it and then we went back and did something. So we've got a lot of things in the hopper right now, and projects, so I-
Can I, okay, can I ask, what's the extra work, since it looks like it's already ready, unless there is a process that we're not aware of?
It, it, it just takes time. It takes time to update reports, takes time to coordinate with staff. It, it can deter from the work that we're doing for the public and other things, as well as projects that we're processing, and we have other things that are coming down, micro enterprise home kitchens, accessory dwelling units. We got projects coming out of our ears. So it's just, it's more of just, it kind of deters from our efforts, that's all.
So if we voted this in tonight, you wouldn't have time to implement it?
No, no, we would, but I'm just saying to go back and change it again would be more effort, that's all.
Okay. I mean, I still, I still want to make that substitute motion anyway and see where it goes. I think that planning commission recommended it. What are they there for, again, okay? And if you have to change it, they have to change it again. It's part of the deal. Appreciate that anyway. I'm just going along with planning commission. They did work on this, and it was staff time, it was presented, so thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Ball.
Yeah, I appreciate all those comments. I would just say that there's a new council, and there's a new planning commission, and I'm very hesitant to change anything. I'd love to see this postponed and for us to have a serious conversation. I, I get that this is an update, but we're, all we've done here, if we're talking about dialing in on the future of Longpoke and economics, all we're doing is saying proper and competent organizations. This is just wordsmithing. This isn't solving anything. We need to have a, a deep discussion about this, but it would be more healthy for us to have that discussion, once we know what we are working with from a budget standpoint. So I fully support putting this off a couple months, coming back and having a serious conversation about it.
All right. Well, there is a substitute motion on the floor that did not receive a second, so we will go back to the original motion, which, as I understand it, was to postpone consideration of the planning commission's recommendation of changing the general plan regarding the economic development committee till after our budget has been approved. Any more details needed than that? All right. Seeing none, that's been moved and seconded. Any other discussions? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 3-2. All right. Unfinished business. The next item is discussion and direction regarding possible changes to the commercial cannabis taxes imposed by the city of Longpoke, and that presentation will be by our city manager, Jim Troop.
Thank you, Mary. Give me one second. So this is a, this, I hate to say another, could be a fairly long agenda item. The staff report itself is, is quite detailed. Hopefully you all had a chance to look through it. We tried to put as much data into it as possible. It talks about where we are as a city, what are our different tax rates are, what other cities are doing, talks about how to go about eliminating the current tax on a tax, displaying the city's cannabis tax on the customary seats, any possible changes in the tax rate itself, the different types of elections. I'm just going to read the, the big headlines here, you know, mail-in elections, a special election, any type of fiscal impact, and then we have some examples, if it was to go back on to the ballot, because this does have to go out to the public if there's any change in the tax itself, not just the dollar amount, but in any change on how we do the taxes. So it's in there. The recommendations we have, it's determined what if any changes the city, to the city's cannabis tax ordinance, the city council wishes to consider before the voters for approval at an upcoming election. Two would be remove the proposed ballot, review the proposed ballot measure and make any suggested modifications, such as removing the tax on tax, or allowing it to be on three seat, as I'd mentioned. Discuss the crafting of a proposed ballot question concerning a change to the current cannabis taxes based on city council's proposed changes. Direct staff to return with an agenda item to include a final ballot measure in the ballot question, to vote on whether to place the measure on an election ballot, and if the direction is given, then staff recommends the city council also decide what would be the timing and type of election to seek voter approval. Some of these election pieces, I will turn it over to our city attorney, he's much more well-versed in that one. Or direct staff to return with additional suggestions or modifications, or last one is just take no action on it. So instead of going through the report, it's all in there, I'm going through a little overview here of our, of our cannabis. So it's, we came up with evaluate, revisit, refine, because we talked about this the last time, and where are we and what are we doing in the city with cannabis? So Longpoke really could be considered a leader in the cannabis industry. There aren't many, if, or any cities, that have such a large per capita business model as we do in the city, in this city. Twenty-one out of our 52 total cannabis applications are for retail or dispensaries. Thirty-one are related to all other types of businesses and cannabis types of industries. Of those, 22 are actually related to the manufacturing and distribution. We broke those out up there. So as you can see, 40% of it is all retail, but if you look at these two here, manufacturing and distribution, that's, I can't, it's quite see, that's 40, about 50%, oh, no, 40-some percent, 20, 30, almost 40%. So those two alone make up a huge percentage of, of all of the cannabis in the whole city. So out of these, 36 applications have been issued for licenses out of the 50-plus. So 13 of those licenses that have been issued were for manufacturing and distribution, which is just about 36%. Eighteen of those were for retail, that's 50% as you can see right over here. Three, three of them were for processing, two of them for laboratory. Of the 36 licenses, 15 have been also issued a BTC or a business license, so that they can go ahead and open up and, and start working. Of the 15 BTCs, one is manufacturing and one is for distribution, so there's two of those out there. We definitely, as we know, that, you know, you can see over here, we definitely know the dispensaries are there. One of the reasons the manufacturing, distribution, other isn't there, it takes a lot more to put that business together in the terms of tenant improvements, or for those that are building from ground up. It's not simply going in and finding an old commercial building and putting in walls and cameras and whatnot. It's much more entailed to go in and do the manufacturing portion of it. Some of them are extraction, so they have to put in specially rated walls, they have to know what to do with all the butane storage and, and other items. So they're coming along, and that's what Brian was saying before, they have a lot of these things on the books to go through. So another thing we need to do is evaluate where we are. So evaluating is the community outreach and the partnership as a city. We should be educating both the public and the businesses on proper etiquette, so that we're all working together. The city, the cannabis industry, the public should work together to make Longpoke, Longpoke a better place for living, but also for working. So it's, it's that cohesiveness that we have to have between the two. By evaluating where we are today and where we need to be tomorrow, we can make Longpoke better for everybody. We do need to do an outreach and follow-up with the industry, such that we can educate them on how to do things such as hold an event, you know, what kind of event, little event, big event, any event at all, we need to work with them as just one example on what they want it to do. The cities and businesses would benefit from what I would call the concierge program, and that's something we'll get into in a minute, and that is, you know, walking them through not just the process when they first walk in the door, but after they've walked out the door, keeping that going, you know, what are, what are some changes in the statutes? What are some changes in the state rules and regulations, you know, trying to make sure that everybody is up to date on what they can and can't do. We need to revisit what we've been doing. So on a community outreach and partnership, you know, what does the community really want? A thriving and successful community includes recreational opportunities, a healthy and updated library, good public safety on personnel and equipment, and them, as well as their facilities, and these are all paid from the general fund. They're also a benefit to the industry by providing a wonderful place for their employees to live and work and raise a family. Having myself been in the private industry before, I would assume that the cannabis industry would also want assistance or enforcement of unlicensed competition, maximize their profits, and ensure a secure business environment for themselves and then their employees. Business would probably also like to be kept up to date on any regulations or changes so that they're always compliant. This is, this isn't just a McDonald's and you're following any food handling. This one is like even more so than the wine industry or the, you know, the alcohol industry. There's many, many more regulations they have to follow. So again, trying to keep them updated as well as ourselves, because it's our last, first, and only annual review, we have a consultant that came in, and we as staff learned a lot of things that we didn't know, and we thought after doing this three years, we knew most everything, but there are so many other regulations out there. Something to revisit. This is something that would be going on and on and on. So administration and compliance is, is everything within the city. So part of that, if you look at, you know, the monitoring, we have to go out on an annual basis and monitor and see and make sure that everyone's following what they should be doing. We need to look and check on our ordinance, which we just talked about a meeting or two ago, and make sure that's always up to date, you know, with the state making different changes. Congress just put through some new, or their, Congress did, now I think it's over at the senate, about changing and making it legalized, taking it off a schedule one drug. There's discussion about changing the banking ordinance and rules and letting them actually use FDIC-type of bankings. We need to keep doing that. We need to do revenue analysis to see what we're doing and how we're doing it. Are we doing everything we can to bring in the revenue that we should be to the city? Any types of changes in legislative cannabis areas, we need to find out what's going on, keep up with that one. Audits can be everything from the business itself, as we went out and did the audits to see, make sure they have the cameras in place, to a financial audit. So the administrative part is very complex and very time-consuming, probably much more than everyone probably realized we were doing, but we need to revisit that and do it, you know, on a daily, annual basis, because things do change. And we need to refine what we're doing. You know, right now, we have dedicated staff that are doing this above and beyond everything else they were supposed to do. And I said in the beginning, we're probably one of the highest per capita cities for cannabis, and we didn't add anybody. Other cities have added teams, be it small to large. In a last discussion we had on this, the council asked, well, what would be the best type of division that we had for cannabis oversight? And it was large. It was a million-plus dollars for the people that we felt that included everything from police to fire, to building, planning, administrative. It was quite a few people. The next question was from the council, well, what, what is the bare minimum? What, what do you really have to have? So a couple of the things we're talking about right now would be a minimum of these two FTEs. One is a development assistant over in the city clerk's office that could help handle the influx of the calls, the people walking in, the changes in legislation, you know, so many different areas that are going on. And the other one, the development assistant here, would be over in the community development area, helping with the building and the planning, going out and seeing if there's any issues with the buildings that are going on. If people are coming in and saying, hey, I want to, I want to take this building, will it work? Having that ability to work with the different businesses. So it's, this is where that concierge piece I was mentioning comes into play, having people that are dedicated to it. There's just two, it's not the, I think we had probably eight or 10 people before, two people, one on the administrative side and one on the development side. But we can keep in touch, you know, it's also being able to keep in touch with all the businesses. They have a question, they know who their point of contact's going to be. Thought this one is interesting. So what this does is, right now, if you recall, we have a flat fee, and that's for anybody other than cannabis. If you're manufacturing, distribution, you're paying a flat fee. It's $2 million, $15,000 if you do up to $2 million, $30,000 if you go above the $2 million, and then the sky's the limit. So if there's 22, and you can see, this is, this is just hypothetical, so we did a predicted revenue chart for the 22 manufacturing and distribution licensed operators that are out there today. We did a couple different scenarios. If you look over on the far side, we did one at $2 million, $5 million, and $10 million in gross income, gross sales. And with that, if you look, so this is where they are over here, how much money they'd be bringing in if it was the $10 million for each of them, $220 million, $110 million, $44 million. The city itself, I can't, I'm having a hard time reading that. Right here, this is the flat fee that would be brought in, and that would be $660,000 for each one of those, whether, whether it's the two, the $10 million, the $5 million, or the $2 million. If you go one step to the right, and if there was a tax for 2.5%, then you can see what that is, and it's the 1.1 million, I can read my own writing here, 2.7 million and 5.5 million. Go one more step at the 3%, and that is 1.3, then 3.3, and then 6.6. If you go to the far left, which, or far right, which is 5%, which is more or less the industry average for California right now, for the different cities, that's 2.2 million, 5.5 million, and $11 million that would be taxable from the different businesses. The reason we did it this way is, you can see, this is, this is showing visually, $220 million. It doesn't even show up here on the $600,000. A little bit shows up here, little bit more, you know, you get over here and, and there's a, a little bit more there. Visually, it's a very small piece of the total pie. It's still a tax, I understand that, but we do have a lot of needs in the city, and these needs also would benefit all of the businesses that are out there, and benefit all of the people that work for them, that live in the city, and benefit all the citizens that live here, that have these businesses here. So that's just one example. Another one is, what if there's only four of them? Not all 22, what if there's only four? So if there's only four of the businesses that were open, sort of give you the low end, because we already have a few that are open, gives you the same basics on what they would do, so $2 million a piece, $5 million a piece, $10 million a piece. Just real quick, that first grouping here under the, if there's only four and they did $2 million a piece, it'd be $80,000, is the increased amount, let me say that again, the incremental amount. So $120,000 is what it would be across the board, but the incremental amount from 120 to 200 to 240 to 400, that's how I'm going to be going across, that's an extra $80,000, an extra $120,000, or an extra $280,000. You go to the middle group, that's an extra $380,000, extra $480,000, extra $880,000. If you go to the far right group over here, from that 120, which is what the flat rate would be for those individuals with that business, it'd be $880,000, a million, $80,000, or eight, 1.0, almost 1.9 million for that. That's just from the four. So trying to keep it short. So should the council decide to move forward with any changes, you know, be it the tax on the tax, be it with the, putting it on the receipt, but should they move forward with any change in the tax itself? There's different ways to do this. So the revision to the cannabis tax structure would provide assistance to current and future cannabis businesses to become and remain more successful. Funding a single employee in the administration and a single person in the community development, that would help with our, with our concierge type of idea. Any of the additional tax revenues that might be- Any of the additional tax revenues that might be generated if you were to move in that direction could help fund general, general fund type of matters. But there's also different things you could think about when it comes back, if you were to do that, a resolution could be done. So, it's implemented in a way that you could have a, a scale, a tier, if you will. So, if you picked a number, and I'm just hypothetically saying if it was 5%, you could say, well, the first year someone's in business, it's 1%. Next year, it's 2%, 3% for, you know, by year five, if they're in business, now they're at the total 5%. Could be the other way around. You could start at 5% and move upward and decrease as you get up higher. I, you know, you could come up with a lot of different ways. That would be coming back to council to discuss how and you would wanna implement that. The council could also decide, you go and say, we wanna put a tax out there for 5%, but you would go by resolution and say, no, we're gonna have it at 3%, 2%, 1%. It's just, you know, it's a matter of the council, it just would never allow you to go above that. So, that's, I believe, my last one. Yep, so, that's my wrap up. I can go through any of the agenda, the item report itself. Or I can take any questions you have.
So, for clarification, tonight, we are discussing potential changes to the tax measure and giving direction to staff to go back and formulate a potential ballot measure.
Correct.
So, that can be done with a simple majority?
Yes, to, to make changes, yes.
And then to put it on the ballot measure, based on your chart when it comes back, it requires four or five, depending on the date chosen to put it on the...
I'm gonna look at Jeff. It could be a three to two, that would have to be a special tax. So, that would be a 66, call it 67%.
Right, but what I'm saying is, tonight, it's a simple majority to discuss staff recommendations to potentially craft a new tax measure.
Correct, yep.
It would come back to vote on whether to put it on the ballot or not, and that is a different...
That's a, right, yes.
...set of parameters for putting it on the ballot.
Correct.
Okay.
So, there's multiple items in this about what is going to be on if you choose to do that.
But tonight, your major focus from us, you would like us to let you know what, if any, changes might go on a tax measure. And it would come back to us to decide when to go on and how many votes it needed to go on to a ballot.
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure we all understood the focus of the discussion, given there is tons of information in the staff report. Okay, Councilmember Ball.
All right, here we go. Here's the, this is the fun one. A lot of you know that when I jumped into trying to be involved in this process, I, I ran on this issue. I noticed an inequity in our cannabis ordinance. I'm pro-cannabis, you don't have to believe that if you don't want to, but I do believe in equity. And so, to illustrate, and I've been thinking about this for a long time, how do we make it simple? How can we illustrate the inequity that we have? And I'm asking for you to bear with me for just a couple of quick seconds. If there's a, a few of you out there that has newer technology, like a phone that has a calculator, please grab that out. And city manager, if you don't mind, I, I don't trust the city calculators, but I went and found a really old one here. And I checked it and I switched all the things, I tested it, and I think the numbers were accurate, but it, it's on paper. So, I appreciate the city manager humoring me through this. So, let's talk about this. I personally have no desire to raise taxes on dispensaries. Dispensaries have been, they have been carrying the load, honestly, 6% straight off. They're, they're paying that. What I wanna illustrate is the difference between the different sides of the industry. And I'm not making this up. I've talked to a lot of people in the industry on both sides. Well, let's break it down. Let's use a number, $10 million, okay? So, if you've got your calculator, $10 million. If you're a dispensary and you make, or gross, or whatever the self-reporting requirement is, you make $10 million bucks over the course of a year and you have to pay 6%, somebody yell it out, how much is that? 6% of $600,000 on $10 million, right? Okay, so, wow, thank you dispensaries, you are helping Lompoc, we really appreciate that. And manufacturing is helping Lompoc too. Yes, they're bringing jobs, lots of opportunities. They're trying to bring employees here to find a, a safe town to live in, raise their families, that's fine. But let's start to break this down. So, $10 million made in manufacturing. And before I go there, let's, I don't think there's much argument. I've heard many people say that a, a fee is essentially a tax. Does anyone disagree with that? Maybe, we can talk about it later. But a fee is a tax. So, if, if we accept that, let's do this. So, $10 million and $30,000 is the fee. What's that tax percentage that the manufacturers are paying right now?
I screwed something up on this one, it's a...
You may have to help me with your phones if you, if we, this is the city calculator, so we've...
Yeah, 0.3, so, 3 cents, 3...
Okay, so, manufacturing, if you agree that a fee is a tax on $10 million, the same income, their effective tax rate is from the city of Lompoc, them bringing in some funds, trying to help rebuild our community, is .03%.
0.3.
0.3%, thank you.
3 tenths.
So, here's where it gets, did I say that right?
No, it's, it's, as, as a percent, it's .03 or 3 tenths of a percent.
So, 3 tenths of a percent, okay, fine. So, we're, we're way off, we've got 6% and .3 or .03, you understand the difference. Let me illustrate it even further. So, what happens when manufacturing makes it to $25 million? They're gonna still pay $30,000 to the city. What's their effective tax rate since you all, that I've talked to, many of you said that a fee is a tax? So, how much taxes are we getting from manufacturing on $25 million in gross revenue?
0.12.
Oh, my goodness, how did it go down? So, I'd love one more number. So, if they are successful and they build and they grow and they make it to $50 million in revenue, oh, my gosh, I hope the calculator can go this low. What's that number? What's the effective tax rate for manufacturing making $50 million in Lompoc?
6/100ths, so, 0.06.
So, I have talked to many people in dispensaries and in the industry. I have no desire to raise taxes on dispensaries. If there was an openness up here at council, I would actually be open to lowering that because that's on the back of consumers. But when it comes to manufacturing, somehow, before I got here, we didn't notice how egregious the disparity is between taxation. Now, I know we've got public comment, I know a lot of people have ideas and people have given us feedback, but I'm being completely blunt and honest with you. I've got stacks, the city has provided it. If you wanna talk to me afterwards, we'll go through and list every single city that has found the will and the wherewithal to charge a reasonable amount on manufacturing. Why? To drive them out of town, to lose jobs? There's a ton of places that have the industry there thriving and their community is benefiting in that that industry has paid their fee or their tax. And the city is in turn benefiting the citizens with some of those resources. Is it the cannabis industry's fault that we have crime? That people don't feel safe or that our parks aren't great? No, that's not the issue at all. It's not their fault. But we have the opportunity to have invited an industry in here to help us rebuild our community. So, I'm not looking for any large ridiculous numbers here. But if you've got a reason or a good argument that we should keep a tax rate for somebody possibly making up to $50 million in Lompoc, and that tax rate should be .0 something? We have to do better. It could be a low number, but it has to be something. We're getting next to nothing. We're driving around in 30-year-old fire trucks that we can't certify anymore. Our police cars can't stop in time because we have to keep sending them in to get repaired and it costs us more than buying a new one. We are so far behind in our responsibilities to do our due diligence for this city, our fiduciary responsibility. And up to this point, we've missed it. From my perspective, it is an emergency. We need to get this on the ballot ASAP. Why? So that the voters can decide their destiny for their town. Not the industry and not me. This should be up to the voters. If we delay this, if we can't get this done, worst case, if we can't get five people up here to get out of the way, we're going to postpone this, worst case, until November of 2022. By the time we start collecting anything from this update, we should've done this years ago, it'll be the first part of 2023. So, again, we're gonna tell our community, we've gotta wait a few more years. Just wait, just hang in there, we'll be fine, we'll get there eventually. That is not fair. We have an emergency in our town. And there is a gross and egregious disparity between the tax rates on the industry here. We have to do something and we have to do something immediately.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah, Mr. Trupe, what's the second page here? Evaluate Current City of Lompoc Cannabis Industry. You use the word robust as compared to other cities in the county. Why would Lompoc be the robust cannabis industry that it is now?
Which, which page are you talking about, sorry?
Two. This one. This is where you use the word robust. We have a robust cannabis industry here.
Yes.
What is, what would make the industry robust? What, why are they here?
In my opinion, because, and I do have an economics background, it's the free market.
Free market and favorable tax.
Free market.
Absolutely there. Well, let's go and let's talk about manufacturing, et cetera, et cetera. Class one, our police won't accept money from the cannabis industry. The cannabis industry, you use the word gross. The word gross is gonna be through here because the net is so small. Remember, everybody gets a write-off. If you buy a house, you write off your mortgage, et cetera, et cetera. A new equipment in a shop, if you don't write it off that year, you have depreciation scales. You have all these options in the world of taxes to do something, except cannabis. Cannabis now does not. So, when you're saying $10 million, well, so they bought a $5 million building. Now, there's $5 million. They used $4 million in equipment in that building, they're at $9 million. So, what's happening here is not what it appears. These guys are not making $10 million. They are taxed. I, I couldn't give you the exact amounts, the state is double-digit. The county's double-digitting. When it's all said and done, I don't think you're gonna see the huge multimillion-dollar returns. One of the things that happens in here is we've, we've not listed the real successful cities. We've listed cities on a norm where some think we should be on a 5% or 6% sales tax. But we didn't list like Humboldt, zero, King City, $30,000 flat. These are other examples that are building out and doing well. We're trying to run them out right now. I, I guess another question is, since the discussion of taxes, how many permits have been pulled, taken, not going through the chain? Who's gonna wanna invest or halfway through and then all of a sudden, here we are dangling out there, oh, let's, let's put a tax on the ballot? Of course, it's gonna pass. But are we doing justice for a long term? I don't think so. You know, the, the Prop 64 grants, have we applied? Are there any available? I don't know. We keep talking about monitoring, monitoring. Do we put our police out and try and do underage buying? Do we do this with cigarettes anymore? No, but we seem to spend a lot of our time and emphasis on an industry that's regulated through a Bureau of Cannabis. They're already paying to be policed by the state and we wanna go ahead and get involved. Well, you know what happens when government gets involved? Failure usually, high cost. You want a business to leave? Tax it, for sure. That's the path we're going down. We have not even started here and we're already gonna shoot ourselves in the foot. The figures aren't right.
Councilmember Kudova.
I, I have a different view on this because I hate the fact that we're always crying to the cannabis industry about the fact that we're poor and everything, that we don't have, like somehow it's the cannabis industry's problem. They're just coming into our community. So, I, I don't think it's their responsibility to fund every single need that this community has. What I do think, however, is, is that they don't get to come into our community, make millions over millions of dollars and not pay their fair share. That's all we have to do, is make sure that, like any other industry and any other business that conducts business in our community, that they are successful in being able to do that and that they are being charged what they should be charged and that we are using that money responsibly to regulate them the way we should be regulating them, based on the state, no additional, you know, bells and whistles to all of that. They already have that rigorous regulation coming down from the state. And then, and then use the money also, like anything else that comes in, to, to fund our general fund and be able to change the state of our community. But the constant calling out or crying out to the cannabis industry, if they wanna donate money to, to, to things or organizations or, or projects in our community, they're gonna do it and they've shown that they want to do that. But that does not take the place of them paying proper taxes and, and, and making sure that we are cost recovery for the regulation that is required of this industry like it is with any other industry in this town. So, I just wanna say that because I, I keep hearing that and, and I, and it just bothers me that that's, that that's, that that's our message.
So, does, oh, Councilmember Ball.
Sorry, I just wanted to, to comment on a couple of things. Look, I get it, I, we've got a single out of industry. It is the way it is and it's the way it is because we've got a stack of cities here that understand the state does provide a lot of regulation, that a lot of taxes, but all of these cities found the wherewithal, the will to tax it too, to add regulation, to add oversight. Tons of places that have burgeoning cannabis dispensaries and manufacturing. There, it's working in these places. Is there a couple of exceptions? Yeah, always, but the overwhelming majority of places in California have a tax. Paso Robles, look, this'll scare the industry for sure. Paso Robles in February of this year said 15% on everything. Now, there's a great argument, who's gonna go there in the industry? Are we gonna lose somebody from Lompoc to Paso Robles to go pay a lot more tax? No. The stuff that we're talking about is trying to find a fair, reasonable number that still keeps us competitive, that understands where the average is. And let's not forget, that brings some equity back between dispensaries paying way more than what manufacturing is right now. If you need examples, please talk to me afterwards, it's, it's, it's here. I know we can do this. What we need to find out is that, is there willingness for this council to get out of the way and let the voters figure this out? In terms of coming up with the details, I, I agree with Mr. Starbuck. There's no, there's no need to push the industry out. But if the argument is adding a couple percentage here that everyone's just gonna leave, again, where are they gonna go? Somebody mentioned a couple places with 0%, King City and Humboldt. Humboldt, that makes sense there because they can grow it and deliver it right next door and boom, it's done. Guess what Lompoc has? Right outside of our borders is up and coming, hello, one of the world's largest places of growing cannabis. Now, do you think that these industry here with a small percentage that we're trying to talk about perhaps, is gonna up and move and then transport all that stuff up north? No. They're planning to process it all right here in Lompoc. And somehow, my city's still okay with just $30,000. That doesn't cover anything, nothing. So, again, let's have this conversation at the council level. We don't have to grandstand, let's talk it, let's hash it out. Is there any willingness to make any adjustment or not on dispensaries? We should be able to answer that pretty quickly. Is there any willingness to talk about a fair tax for manufacturing? It shouldn't be that complicated. So, I'd love to start hearing some numbers and if we can't get there, I'll, I'll offer up some.
So, this is a time to ask questions of staff and then we'll go to public comment. And then after coming back from public comment is where we should discuss what that potential change looks like. So, take advantage of this time rather than to advocate what you may or may not want to see done, but to ask questions of staff so that when we move into discussion and so public understands where we're... so public understands where we're thinking that we've gotten as much information for them ahead of the public comment. Councilmember Vega.
I understand paying fair share, sometimes the timing of everything is one of my questions, you know, with staff. You have pending applications, you have people that are, that are in the process, Mr. Troop, I'm sure there is, and how it will affect other people, because, you know, if the, if the market was completely saturated where everything was sold out, you know, and everything, that would probably be a better time, you know, of everything to actually ding somebody. What you're going to do is probably alienate and probably make some people turn, turn away at this time, and that's my concern, just a concern. We have Guadalupe who's getting ready to, or at least they're in the process of approving over there, so it's going to be another competitor here. So what we'd like to do is retain as many of the cannabis businesses as we can under the scenario of applications pulled, you know? There's people here that have, and I've heard through the grapevine or have contacted me, they're at the tail end of everything, okay? I understand, you wait till the end, sometimes there's repercussions to it, but there have been many businesses that have failed, waiting for Lompoc to learn, which was part of the process, you know, it took them whatever, and they didn't have enough money to pay for their lease, and they just starved out, you know, and they left, you know? And that's one of my concerns with people that have an application in being that they've, the city's taken a deposit, and they do have an obligation, once you take money to get them through, and I'm not sure exactly who, who's in limbo and who's where in the process, you know, that could be affected, you know? So that is a concern, you know, and I'm not sure if you can tell me offhand, how many applications are in the horn there?
Yeah, we have 52 that have been turned in, and, can I remember, Stacy, do you recall? Is it 30, 36 that have been?
Yeah, that are issued, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but how many are, are in where they're not approved yet completely? And they're not in business, and they have their application with the city?
It'd be 10, about 14.
See, that's, that's a lot, you know? I just think that, you know, everything is, what are we going to do with people like that if we tax prematurely and we make them leave when they were given a concept from which to open a business? So it'd be like a little bit disingenuous to turn people away, or is that another way of controlling the free market by sending them away? I have to ask that question, you know? If that's one of the intents of saying, hey, we have enough, so let's go ahead and raise the taxes on the remaining applications, what happens to those people? You know, or is that the plan? Because it could be, because all I've heard is, we have staff shortages, we can't do it, we don't have any money, even tonight with tax amendments, we can't do that, it's better to wait, you know? It's like, gosh, it's like, what are we going to do? You know, you, you've taken their money, so there is a moral obligation to saying, we take their money, or do we just say we're not taking anybody's money anymore? So that's one of my comments, that we need to be cognizant of the people that have invested, are in the process, because I've had calls from other big-time agents here and stuff, and they, they were telling me, hey, they thought that the timing would be better when, once Lompoc's saturated. There's only a few properties left in Lompoc, but now you see you have 14 applications. What happens to those people? Thanks.
Councilmember Ball.
So a couple of things that I'll, and again, we could, you know, we can definitely yell back and forth about a couple of things, but you do make a good point, and something that I'd love to, to introduce, that I'm, I'm definitely open to, is that if you want to be sensitive to businesses getting open, look, anyone who got into this industry that didn't take into account that a city council might change, or that a tax rate might change a little bit, why did they get in this business? Every other city has this leeway to do this. So my suggestion is, if, if, if you would be open to it, is maybe we do look at the necessity of having a, a fair tax, but to make it more palatable so that businesses can get open and start thriving a little bit more, if you're really worried about that. Again, they're paying .0 something percent, maybe we phase it in. So like they suggested, maybe over the course of a year, it's something, and it grows, or, you know, if they can't be successful in three years, and they're living in, on such slim margins, which I still have trouble with, because if it's better to go open a pizza shop without overhead than it is to, and 1% to 3% margin change is going to put you out of business, I still have a little bit of trouble with that. But if we need to make it a little bit easier for the industry, I'm open to different approaches. But this .0 something tax thing, we're talking about, you know, a robust industry, the, the word robust, I mean, there's people in our community that are looking around hoping for a robust city, for robust parks, for robust safety, for robust lots of things. So we have to have some balance. I am very open to, to, to finding the will up here to get to something that's reasonable, and then get it to the voters so that we can get this done. Just my two cents.
Any questions for staff at the moment? If we don't have any questions for staff, I'd like to go ahead and open it for public comment. Seeing no lights go on, we will open for public comment. The number to call on item number seven is 805-875-8201, and remember to mute your TV, PC, or radio. You have three minutes. Please come to the podium if you'd like.
Okay. All right. Can I do it myself?
You have the floor, sir.
I have something for all three of you guys. It's kind of interesting. I have a relative that started growing in another state, Colorado. And he started off, and you know, he had an idea of what it was going to cost him in investment. He's not wealthy, worked hard all his life. And he got about a third of the way through, and the state changed the regulations, and he, okay, we'll do that. They changed them again, and they changed them again. Once you have an investment started, you're not going to back out of that investment, nobody's going to leave here once they're established. And people in this business, they know how it works, and it's not like you have one shot the first year. Every year it's going to compound. So all I'm saying is, you're not going to scare anybody away with taxation, but if you don't do something with the taxation pretty soon, you know, I've been here for, I didn't introduce myself, Bill Babcock, I've been here for 11 years, and I've seen a lot of changes, some good and some not. But I watch cars racing up and down my street, on F Street, South F, on a regular basis, daily. And, and I've talked to a couple of the patrolmen, and they said, you know, we're so swamped, we don't have, we don't have time to be looking at things like this. If we can't put more of a police force in this town, how do you think you're going to stop the homicides if you can't even write tickets? Because you don't have enough police. So all I'm saying is, if you don't make hay while the sun shines, and if you're afraid that people are going to leave because of investment, no, they're not going to leave. They're going to keep on going. And the people that leave, that started off too light, it's just like any restaurant that doesn't make it. You know, we all try. I hope you guys go for the taxation.
Thank you for that.
Hi, I'm Wally Waldau, local resident. Councilmember Ball, summer, I think we had, the word on the street was that we had the two largest cannabis operations in the world. I don't know, maybe we lost our status, we're only down to one, but we had the two largest ones last summer. Two years ago, the person sitting in your seat right now, shipped a report saying, basically saying, if you raise this sales tax, you're going to have problems. And I think he was also saying is, the five of, that were up there don't have the wherewithal and the will to handle that properly. And again, I'm hearing, if you raise this tax or put up this tax, you're going to have problems, you're going to chase people away. And I think I'm also hearing that you might just be able to do it right, to do the tax, you have the wherewithal to do it right. You're not going to chase people away, but to keep on saying you are going to chase the people away, seems, seems to say that you don't have faith in the five of you being able to do it right. Thank you.
Thank you.
First time I've had a yellow card here. I'm Kathy Howard, this is what I really came to speak about. Let me see if I can get my iPad right. Madam Mayor, City Councilpersons, please don't wait to put a ballot measure that places a fair tax on cannabis manufacturing facilities before the voters of Lompoc. Between the manufacturing facilities and sales outlets in our city needs to be corrected, and frankly, Lompoc desperately needs the income. I watched a previous council refuse for years to place a 1% sales tax increase on the ballot. Their stated rationale, the people of Lompoc would never support it, would never vote for it, implying that our citizens wouldn't understand the need for it. By the time that council finally agreed to place the sales tax increase on the ballot and reluctantly supported it, the people of Lompoc ended up wholeheartedly voting for it by an almost 70% yes vote. Our citizens understand economics pretty well. That sales tax increase was a chance for Lompoc to, to recover economically, but the previous council made the decision to obligate those funds for the next 13 to 14 years to pay off the city Calvert's debt. Fixing the manufacturing cannabis tax is really the last chance to solve some of the multitude of problems that the city has been having to say no to over the last many years. Please, put the issue before the people, the sooner the better. The citizens of Lompoc have proven themselves to be smart, understanding, and responsive. Let them speak by voting, and soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Richard Smith, citizen and cannabis business owner. Is it okay if I take this off while I'm talking? So the new council majority made it very public that our industry would be a target for them. That threat alone had me cancel the manufacturing operation that we were going to open. So I'm one of the very few locally-owned cannabis businesses here in town, regardless of what other people say. Our plan was to build a, my plan was to build a vertically-integrated facility that produced 45 to 50 jobs. Then the threats of increased taxation came, and so I canceled the lease and did not submit my application for manufacturing. That's 20 jobs gone. They were going to average between $25 to $30 an hour. That can't come back for me now, because I don't have the funds for it. And I was one of those people that made those investments, and I had to walk away because the threat of percentage-based taxes on gross sales was going to be a killer. I come from a financial background myself, and can easily put together revenue plans and projection models, and going away from the flat tax, the 15 to 30, was going to kill my small business. I'm a mom and pop. You're upset that Raw Garden doesn't pay their fair share, that's the bottom line here. They make over $100 million a year, and they're not paying their fair share. That's just one business. That's the majority of all your tax dollars that are coming from manufacturing. I saw in the list of emails, multiple small mom and pops that are going to pull out because of the threat of a percentage on our gross sales. I pay a percentage of my gross sales now for the retail store, and, you know, it's, it's basically a cost we pass on to the consumer, because we raise our prices to cover that. It's the only way. We can't tell them that we're charging them, so that's tough, just paying that on the gross, because once the federal taxes kick in, I'm not profitable. I have no deductions beyond cost of goods sold. Now, manufacturing, they're much better off there because they can deduct quite a bit of cost of goods sold and make their federal tax obligations much lower. So definitely Raw Garden is taking advantage of our town, and they should pay their fair share. But you should do it in a balanced approach. You should keep the current tiered, tiered system. Keep the 15 and the 30 at the same revenue targets you have, and just add it, keep the tiers going. Don't stop the tiers. Keep them going up to 100 million, 200 million dollars. Collect what's fair. We cut it off at the 2 million because we wanted to bring in businesses, and we didn't want them to go to the county, we wanted them here in Lompoc. You already lost my manufacturing, and Distro's gone too, which is already approved license, I'm not building it out anymore because of the threat for higher taxes.
Richard, I need you to wrap it.
I understand. I'm the small business owner that you're pushing out of town, so you've got to want to be fair.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Osborne, members of the City Council, Ann McCarty, Lompoc City resident. As a homeowner, shopper, and leader in this community, this city is important to me. The safety of the residents, the health of our children, and the availability of products when we need them should be important to everyone that lives here. But honestly, we won't have any of those luxuries if we don't get a handle in our financial future. When I hear folks recommend to those moving to the area not to live in Lompoc because of violence, the unavailability of certain shopping options, dining options, and schools, that too should be a concern to everyone. We should all want a vibrant community, one where empty storefronts are bustling with new businesses, one where homelessness and mental health issues are addressed in ways that reduce the negative impact in our city, and one where law enforcement officers and firefighters work less overtime hours. But we're in a hole that we will never get out of without, without a way to maintain a sustainable funding stream. Sustain means to keep up or prolong. So here we're faced with an opportunity to have a sustainable funding stream that infuses life into our city. Fixing the inequity that currently exists with the cannabis ordinance seems like it should be the first thing on your to-do list. Am I suggesting that we're to ride on the back of the cannabis industry all the way to our final financial health? Absolutely not. What I think we need to think about is what life is like for this city five to 10 years down the road. The ripple effect of fixing and improving broken, a broken process is critical to our flourishing. Cleaning up the urban blight, supporting our public safety partners, attracting businesses that meet our needs so that we don't have to shop elsewhere. The bottom line is, we have to start somewhere. We can start by fixing a broken, ill-prepared cannabis ordinance and making it fair and equitable. Placing a tax on the cannabis manufacturing industry would provide some much-needed funding for public safety as well as other necessary programs in our community. Taxes are a cost of doing business, and giving multimillion-dollar manufacturing businesses a free ride is unconscionable. Surely paying the $30,000 fee a year but not paying taxes like everyone else in this city is absurd. As a resident, I ask you to give us a chance to decide. I support changes in the tax ordinance and encourage you as a council to approve a change, giving us, the voters, a chance to help improve our city. Let our voices be heard. Truth is, doesn't matter how many times you put lipstick on a pig to pretty it up, it's still a pig. It's time for a whole new makeover, and I suggest we start with the cannabis ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Cameron, and I've lived in Lompoc for a few years, and I want to say that I'm very disappointed in y'all for raising the cannabis taxes on the mom-and-pop shops as much as y'all have. I completely understand how y'all want to raise the taxes on the manufacturing businesses, and I do support that, because they are making hundreds of millions of dollars per year, like one of the main ones is Raw Garden, and that's really the only one that's killing it. All these mom-and-pop dispensary shops, they're not making the millions and millions of dollars like how, how I hear you guys talking about. It is to my, and it is also to my understanding that y'all would rather spend $1 million on a new police force that only regulates the dispensaries in Lompoc, when there's also, when there's already a statewide police for, or not police force, the Bureau of Cannabis Control that already, that already regulates the dispensaries in Lompoc. So you guys are just basically wasting a million dollars when there's homelessness in the streets, when there's underpaid cops. in the streets, when there's underpaid cops, there's, you know, big old freaking holes in the road, you know, the list goes on of things that you could spend a million dollars on other than this new police force. And once again, I am very disappointed that you guys are spending a million dollars on this police force, and I really hope that you guys find somewhere else to spend the money, and I hope that y'all can lower the prices on the local mom-and-pop shops, dispensaries. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Lynn again. In retail sales, there's an illegal tactic called bait and switch. It's listed by the Department of Consumer Affairs as illegal in California. Simply stated, you offer a customer, in this case cannabis businesses, a tax rate to entice them to locate in Lompoc because it's more cost-effective than other cities, and we get a robust cannabis industry. And now, after they've invested tens of millions of dollars, you want to raise the rates that brought them here. So they developed their business plans and came to Lompoc. They purchased buildings at substantially higher prices and increased the property tax base for city revenue. Then they paid tens of thousands of dollars in permits and applications. Next, they spent tens of thousands of dollars on architects, engineers, and city building fees. They chose to come to Lompoc because Lompoc had less limitations and lower costs. They chose to come here because there are a lot of workers in Lompoc that will have much higher-paying jobs in the cannabis industry and not have to commute 100 miles every day to work on the South Coast. And now the switch. Now that the businesses are here, they bought property, they're spending money, and many of them not even yet open, you want to raise the rates that lured them here. The result of this is approved tonight, and before the residents even get to vote this down, if some cannabis businesses have not yet been able to get through the city process, may move to a less, to a more cost-effective city before spending more money here. And you heard from one earlier. Certainly those that are thinking about coming here will go elsewhere until it is voted down by the residents. However, the biggest loser, and the one I'm concerned about, will be the workers in Lompoc that will never get those better-paying jobs and struggle financially to cover the rising costs of commuting to the South Coast, where they spend their paychecks shopping and paying their sales tax, not in Lompoc. I'm sure you all know, I did not vote for recreational cannabis. But rest assured, I will campaign to stop a rate increase after we lure these people here. Now, it's been talked about that maybe what we need are some more categories for higher-dollar revenues, and that certainly might be worth talking about. But I wouldn't send something back to staff tonight because it'll have an immediate effect. Businesses will make a decision to go somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you. If you plan to call in, the number is 805-875-8201, and we will go to a caller after this in-room presentation.
Thank you, Mrs. Mayor. Hello, esteemed audience who has stayed through a nightmare. My name is Carson Link. I was born and raised here in Lompoc, and I am up here to support at least finding some sort of way forward with an equitable tax on manufacturing, whether that's the tiered system as Richard mentioned, or some sort of low percentage tax. It needs to be done. We are in a fiscal emergency right now, and in the end, it's really not up to you. You should put it on a ballot and put it in front of the public, and they can make up their minds because you don't run this town. We run this town, and I know there are a lot of conservative folks in this town who would agree with that sentiment. So if that is truly how we think, please put it on a ballot, and we'll tell you what we think. So thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll go to the phone.
Okay, I am going to try to provide public comment. Good evening, you're live in the Lompoc City Council meeting. You have three minutes to provide your public comment. Please go ahead.
Good evening, Council. My name is Leah Welder, and I'm the president of Veda Scientific, a new cannabis testing lab that we built here in Lompoc. We've been working on our lab since September of 2019 and have embedded ourselves in the local industry and community. We've hired local contractors to help with our building, recruited employees from Allen Hancock College, and I'm proud to say that we recently hired a Lompoc native who was the first of his family to receive a college degree and went on to earn a PhD in molecular biology. Our lab needed someone with his skills, and he'd been waiting for a job opportunity in his hometown of Lompoc to allow him to move back. Successful cities around the country aggressively recruit businesses that they expect to create good jobs, raise the standard of living in their community, and invest in local resources. This is a tried and true system that has reaped huge benefits for smart local leadership and their constituents for decades. Lompoc's leadership made a very smart decision early on to create a regulatory path for cannabis businesses to operate in the city and set a very favorable tax structure. The combination of low local taxes and having implemented the rules earlier than many California communities has given it a head start in the state for attracting the best operations. And if you continue along this path, the city will be able to create a critical mass of major cannabis industry operations here that will be hard to replicate anywhere else. However, if the city decides to raise taxes on cannabis operations now, these operations that have not yet received their licenses and completed their investments will be given a very powerful incentive to reexamine their path and look for opportunities elsewhere. Communities that approved cannabis early but set high local tax rates are now having to lower those tax rates to keep their cannabis businesses from leaving to places with more favorable tax structures like those that exist in Lompoc today. The city report identifies 28 cannabis businesses currently in the pipeline and estimates that these businesses will gross $10 million each and could generate $500,000 of annual revenue each for the city with increased taxes. This financial forecast, I'm sure, has a lot of appeal. However, the reality is that these businesses have not yet been established, and the revenues are still very uncertain. I speak from experience when I say that the road to licensing is very long and expensive, and the road to profitability is even longer and more uncertain. All of these businesses are young and still plotting their courses, which means they could still decide to go elsewhere. But if you give the industry time to mature here and grow and develop profitable businesses that aren't just in the long march of licensing, you'll have greatly expanded options to generate revenue and benefit from the increased sales taxes, property taxes, job creation, and local investment. We're just now seeing on the horizon the prosperity that this industry is going to bring to the region. Let's stay on the path and achieve those goals and avoid the temptation of trying to harvest the rewards before the industry has had a chance to write them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, you're live in the Lompoc City Council meeting. You have three minutes to provide public comment. Please go ahead. Please go ahead, you're live in the council meeting.
Hey, good evening, Council. This is Field Hux. I'm a, I have applied for two manufacturing licenses, a distribution license, and we decided to locate to Lompoc for the favorable taxes. We also operate in other cities that have low tax standpoints. The process, the benefit of the city of the low taxes is all the ancillary jobs that are created, the fees that the city gets from this. It's not based off of one company that's producing lots of revenue. There are dozens of companies that have not even started to produce revenue because the city has taken forever to get through the process. A change in the tax rate at this infancy of the market will choose, will have licensees choosing other cities to take their business. Just the amount of time that it takes to get a license through the city of Lompoc has deterred us from deploying more capital into Lompoc. Any change that's not incremental could be a serious issue for the future of the city of Lompoc, which we've come to love and want to make the Central Coast a great creation of cannabis jobs for the future. That's all. Thank you.
Good evening, you're live in the Lompoc City Council meeting. You have three minutes to provide public comment. Please go ahead.
My name's Angela Baca. I grew up in Lompoc and have worked as a book and magazine editor and director exclusively in the cannabis industry for the last 15 years. I have an MBA with a focus in marketing and economics, and I've focused much of my career examining cannabis policy and its macro and microeconomic impacts nationwide. I moved back to Lompoc in 2019 because I was excited by the original ordinance and the potential it had, as written, to revitalize Lompoc, which has been in the bust part of a boom and bust economic cycle for as long as I or most Lompokians can remember. I'm calling in tonight to oppose any new taxes on the industry and discourage the waste of funds for a local 10-person staff for quote oversight. Let's address the oversight first. One, cannabis is one of the most heavily regulated industries in the world. Due to the very nature of the conflict between state and federal laws, every state's law calls for heavy oversight in order to remain in compliance with the federal guidance from the COAL memo. California was not the first state to legalize, and as such, has built in additional oversight than some of the earlier states that legalized. Two, the state has fully funded a brand-new agency called the California Bureau of Cannabis Control. Our state taxes already pay for oversight of the industry. Three, there's no provision within state law or Lompoc's local ordinance that requires any special oversight of the industry compared with any other industry we have in town. Why is there not a funded wine or alcohol oversight division? Why is there not a funded hotel oversight division? I challenge city council members who support such an oversight to answer this question before spending a million dollars in taxes the city brought in last year on 10 new jobs for quote oversight when the plea to the public on these taxes was for funding police and parks. Now to the taxes. One, not every city or state has had the same success of bringing in these new businesses. In California, under Proposition 64, municipalities have local control over the industry. As such, large portions of the state have banned commercial cannabis activity outright. Those that have allowed it have implemented very heavy taxes and very high barriers to entry, including taxes and fees. As such, they have not seen the same growth that Lompoc has, which was deemed robust in the report, with the industry. Two, saying that quote "other cities do it" is a poor argument to support taxes. Yes, they are doing it, and that is why these businesses came here and not there. Surely, it is not a major population center, which we don't have, or a convenient location off the major highway or interstate, which we're not, that has brought the businesses in. It has been the free market and the lower barriers to entry. One of the biggest issues in the cannabis industry right now has been a lack of diversity in business ownership. This has largely been a result of overregulation. When you cap licenses, increase fees, and otherwise raise more barriers to entry, you prevent small community-owned businesses from having a chance at all to compete. Number three, the industry is already incredibly overtaxed. You may not be familiar with the layers of state and federal taxation, so let me break it down. Cannabis is a Schedule I controlled substance at the federal level.
Sorry, the timer went off, so please wrap up your statement.
Okay, meaning it's completely illegal. I'm going to jump to my last point, and then I'll jump off. One of the arguments I've heard supporting a manufacturing tax is comparing gross revenues of these businesses to the $30,000 fee they pay the city. This is an incredibly deceptive argument. Mr. Ball's assertions in particular show the complete lack of understanding of the most basic concept of business, the difference between gross revenues and net profits. Making calculations based on gross revenues to make this comparison is completely disingenuous. Although a business may do 10 million more in gross revenues, accounting for the debt the business has acquired to start up the operation, overhead, paying employees, buying and keeping equipment, leaves you with a much smaller net profit, many of these companies aren't even profitable yet. It would be more accurate to compare to net profit, which is gross revenues minus all of these expenses. Finally, I would just challenge that if we're going to try to look waste, tap industries for money, why isn't council looking at the wine industry?
I appreciate her call. She also did submit an email with all of her points, so it's not like council hasn't received her points. It was just exceeding way past the three minutes. Do we have any more calls? Okay. We're clear on the calls? No, you've got one more coming through. Okay. Good evening, you're live in the Lompoc City Council meeting. You have three minutes to provide your public comment. Please go ahead.
Hi, this is Leah calling from Lompoc. And I think we need to be a little bit more forward-thinking when it comes to revenue sources. Pretty soon, all the other towns in northern side of Auburn County are going to legalize dispensaries, and so we're going to lose a lot of the business, the day-trippers, if you will, who come to Lompoc to use our dispensaries. They can just stay home and use their dispensaries. So we are going to lose some profit in the cannabis industry when, you know, pretty much sooner rather than later, Guadalupe is starting, I know Ventura is going to, you know, have dispensaries. I mean, I know that we hear, we people in Lompoc smoke a lot of pot, but we don't smoke that much pot. So we do need another, you know, revenue stream coming in. And hey, I'm a big fan of the cannabis industry, but it is a risky business. It's still a class-one drug, and I'm glad it's legal to be enjoyed here in California, but the whole point of pot is that you get to tax it to help the communities that the marijuana is processed and sold in. So yeah, like any business, the cannabis industry is not guaranteed big profits, and no business is guaranteed big profits. One would think that the cannabis industry would actually be down for helping us empower the city to make it a better city for their businesses to thrive in and for their families to feel safe in. And it is disingenuous for some council members to talk about the problems with City Hall and that there's a lack of staffing, and that's really the problem, when, oh my gosh, if we had a better revenue stream, we could actually have more competent employees in City Hall to process paperwork. So anyway, the whole point is, please let us, citizens of Lompoc, decide. Please decide to put this on the ballot sooner rather than later, and let the cannabis industry know we're not trying to put them out of business. We're just trying to make sure that they have a city that they want to stay in. And who the heck wants to live, move to King City? Has anyone ever been to King City? Ugh, Lompoc is actually better than King City. So anyway, please, council, consider putting this on the ballot, letting us Lompokans decide. Thank you very much. Have a great evening. Bye-bye.
We're going to put a pause on public comment because we are about to reach our 11 o'clock hour, and we need to extend our meeting. Is that why your light is on, Councilmember Starbuck?
Yeah, I figured I'd bail you out on this one. I'll go ahead and move, that we extend the meeting a half hour.
So we have a motion for a half hour? That's hopeful.
I'll second that.
And we have a second? Let's go ahead and vote. That passes for one, with Councilmember Vega voting against the extension. You just, just took up 30 seconds, dude. All right, so we'll come back to public comment, and we have more on the phone, and we will continue. Okay. Good evening, you're live in the Lompoc City Council meeting. You have three minutes to provide your public comment. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council. My name is Eric Lightman. I am the general counsel for Shrine Group. I just wanted to state a few points for the city council to consider while they ponder this decision here today. I understand that the city has budgetary needs, but I'm confident that a new cannabis tax will not accomplish the city's goals, either short or long term. We came to the city, along with other businesses, drawn by the lower tax rate relative to other cities, seeing Lompoc a potential long-term partner and stakeholder, willing to work with us and others to make Lompoc a thriving center of the cannabis industry. Lompoc is situated nearby several agricultural zones, making it a potential prime destination for major cannabis operators to locate a regional or principal headquarters. I think Lompoc has a unique opportunity to reinvigorate its economy and become a possible hub for lawful, compliant, regulated cannabis businesses. Once it accomplishes that, hundreds and even thousands of local Lompoc residents will be employed at good wages with benefits in 401Ks. Shrine offers all its employees a living wage, health, dental, and 401Ks, and we have unionized half of our locations with the USCW and are on track to unionize the other half. half by the end of the year. And keep in mind that we have operations throughout the state of California. This tax measure proposal the city is considering sends us and all other prospective businesses the wrong message. Don't come here, that message will be. Shrine will be a prime example. Nearly two years after we first applied for cannabis licenses, not only have we not been able to get our business permits that are necessary to complete our construction, but now the city is poised to increase taxes before we've even opened our doors. Don't come here, the message to others like us will be, and they won't, or at least they will think about going elsewhere. And any chance Lompoc had to become a regional hub in cannabis will begin to fade. Give us and others the opportunity to open for business and for other businesses like us to come here and make the industry mature. I truly believe that the city is potential, can, is best suited waiting until its potentially burgeoning cannabis industry matures, so that it can see these benefits before making a drastic decision. Let the city make an informed decision. Before sending the wrong messages to businesses, "Do not come to Lompoc," the city should give the industry a chance to fully develop in Lompoc and then make a decision, fully informed by the industry, who are truly the city's stakeholders and partners in its endeavors. I respectfully ask that you deny the measure tonight. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Good evening. You're live in the Lompoc City Council meeting. You have three minutes to provide your public comment. Please go ahead.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Councilmember. This is Joe Garcia, founder of the Lompoc Valley Cannabis Coalition. I'm calling tonight to oppose tonight's measure that's being proposed, to send this back to the taxpayer, to the voters to consider tactics. I agree with former Mayor John Lynn and all the comments that he made. I also agree with many of the previous callers they called. The person on the phone before me made some very relevant points and I wanted to speak about that because Stizzi is one of the largest companies in the state of California. They have seven permits in the city of California for distro, for delivery, retail, with onsite consumption, extraction, manufacturing, processing. They are bringing 150 to 200 jobs to Lompoc. They're, as they said, they're ready to roll out because of the irresponsible discussions that the city council is having. And, you know, it's very unfortunate that the three people from the former Economic Development Committee are all pushing stuff and having conversations that are scaring people, much like former city manager Patrick Limiller scared many people when he spoke of bankruptcy. But we'll move on. I find it, you know, very ironic that tonight also Guadalupe discussed cannabis and something that they're considering is zero tax. King City, $30,000 flat fee for manufacturing and testing. And by the way, if we're going to be discussing fair taxes, why haven't we discussed any taxes on laboratory testing? Is that because perhaps it's Raw Gardens' baby and Raw Gardens supported Janelle Osborne for mayor? I don't know, but that's a very funny question and funny thing to see fair tax being discussed without laboratory testing being in the discussion. Slow County, 2.5% manufacturing. Grover Beach, 3%, but if you read the news lately, you know that Grover Beach is considering reducing their taxes even more and including onsite consumption. We lose Stizzi, we lose another opportunity for onsite consumption here in Lompoc and the opportunity to be a hub. But the most important thing is the loss of jobs, the loss of property taxes. You remember what was inside the building that Stizzi is proposing for was a church that paid zero taxes. We're going to be losing out on a number of things, the majority of it being opportunity. The state of commute has us with over 10,000 jobs. People leaving Lompoc for over 10,000 jobs to go to Santa Barbara, Santa Maria, the casino. They pay for their lunch there, they buy their groceries there, they do shopping there. That's all money that's lost. These are jobs that are coming in, these are opportunities. Which of you are going to parade around during the next reelection, say that you're the job killer and economic killers? Because Joe Garcia will be there to remind the people of what you vote tonight. And I'd also like to say that, you know, I would like to request ex parte disclosure on everything related to cannabis.
Next call? Good evening. You're live in the Lompoc City Council meeting. You have three minutes to provide your public comment. Please go ahead.
Hello, my name is Terry Doughtney and I'm turning the radio off now. The cannabis industry is a high-profit market. I don't think that 6% would hurt them too bad. I don't understand all the problems that people are bringing up, as has been stated. Increased fees going into the city, the faster we can process applications, the faster things can get going. If they don't want to be here, that's fine. We've already got Marijuana Alley going out to Boulton. We're already processing complaints about the aroma coming from the farm. I don't see why they shouldn't have to pay their part. And if the city council is not able to pass a equitable tax, please let the citizens decide because we're all in favor of it. And those that aren't, we'll talk to and make sure they are. This is insane. Lompoc needs the funds. We're having to pay funds to get their applications processed. Why is it, why is there even a discussion on this? I don't understand. Anyway, thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you, Jeremy. Thank you, Gilda. Bye.
Thank you for your call. Good evening. You're live in the Lompoc City Council meeting. You have three minutes to provide your public comment. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Ashley Costa, resident for the, of the city of Lompoc. I would like to thank Councilmember Ball for his passion and leadership on this topic tonight and for his courage to bring forward the equity of taxation on an industry that I personally know he supports. It can be difficult when we consider relinquishing our authority as leaders to make decisions, particularly if we're concerned that the community's decision may be divulging from our own. However, that does not change your fiduciary responsibility as elected officials to act in the public interest, which at times means relinquishing your personal authority to make a decision on my behalf and instead allowing me to make this decision on my own. Without knowing what will actually be on the tax measure ballot, I cannot say for sure whether or not I would vote for it. However, what I can unequivocally say is that in this case of cannabis manufacturing taxation, I'm hopeful you will allow the community to decide what is best for Lompoc. I urge you to have courage and consider that if done correctly, this could be the single most important decision you make on the dais, both for a burgeoning industry and for a community in need. It's late, but I believe in you and I know that you can do it. Thank you.
Thank you for your call. We're through the phone calls at the moment. All right, did we have any written communications on this item?
We had several. They were printed, put it out front, provided to council and staff, as well as placed on the website. I can read the names if you want me to.
I, I think, stating the number. Do you remember how many?
No, one, two. Quite a few.
Yes.
We had 28 emails received and some of the emails were also from people who spoke this evening.
Who called in. Okay. But they are available for anyone to review on the website. Any other public comments in the room before I close commentary? All right, seeing none, we will close public comment and bring it back to council. This is an important discussion. And I know that staff needs to hear from us sooner rather than later to get it on a ballot sooner, but it's also a difficult discussion and it needs to be fair. So, what I would like to propose is coming back with two options for us to consider. One, a scaled version that goes above and beyond the two, under two and over two, and something that is a little more aggressive than we currently have. So, when I look at your proposal on the spreadsheet that says predicted tax revenue at 2.5% and you break it at four businesses gross at 2 million, it ends up being 50K per year. So, look at those ranges and look at something like under 2 million, over 2 million, over 5 million, over 10, sort of, sort of low-end to respect the, the small business and locally-owned trying to get up and running, but really look at what does the upper-end scale look like for those that really are making quite a bit of money? And while there are those out there who are very aware that I was a supporter of the industry before I ever got elected and was the only one to speak to it, worked on the ad hoc and initially recommended limited permits, I completely supported a free market because it took the politics out of it. And yes, it's difficult for me to have this discussion with those in the industry that I respect and that I appreciate investing in our community, but I think we need to definitely fix the inequity here because we have put the complete burden on the backs of the consumers with a retail tax. And that will go away as the other communities around us open dispensaries and they no longer only have Lompoc as a choice or choose not to have a delivery come from Lompoc. So, that will fall. So, I'd like to see a scale that allows for, what does a scale look like? And then, the other option that I'd like for us to discuss is what does changing it to a 1.5% on distribution and a 1% on gross manufacturing? And the reason, so the rest of council understands my reasoning, I looked at Santa Barbara County. Santa Barbara County has 3% on manufacturing and 1% on distribution. We have to be conscious of the fact that they do have a choice next door. In the city of Santa Barbara, manufacturing's at 3%, distribution's at 4. So, again, they have a choice and if we go too high, they literally don't have to relocate past their farms. They have an option. City of San Luis Obispo has 2% on distribution and 10.5% on manufacturing. So, while it would be great to set something much higher, I don't want to be greedy. I want to be fair and respectful, both to the industry, but also to what our community needs. And then the last part I'd like to see come back is a phase-in and phasing it in so that it doesn't discourage those that have started the process from being here and able to build up to, especially those that are the mom and pops in the low end. So, that's my proposal, is to come back with two different options. One, for manufacturing and distribution to be a scaled between different ranks of breakovers. And the other is what is a 1% on gross receipts for manufacturing and a 1.5% on distribution? And then a phase-in. That's my proposal. I rushed to it simply because we are very late and I know that we need to at least have a discussion tonight and then bring it back for continued discussion and would like to see it as an early item so that the community doesn't feel like they have to stay up past their bedtimes to participate in it. That's my proposal to see this move forward. Love to hear feedback. Councilmember Cordova.
I think that staff had the opportunity to bring that to the table this time around. When I look at this, at these charts, clearly, some of these really high, it goes anywhere from 1% to 15%. And clearly, some of these communities, when they're at the higher percentages, it's because they don't want the cannabis industry to come in. The cannabis industry is already in Lompoc. We've already established that here. I think that it is fair for us to be able to move forward tonight with allowing the people of Lompoc to have their right to vote on this. And I think that we can do it fairly tonight by, by offering a 2% on cultivation and testing and a 3% on manufacturing and distribution.
So, you've got two proposals on the floor. Councilmember Ball.
So, it was an interesting discussion and I appreciate the willingness from everyone at council to at least hear us out and try to figure out how to hash this out to something reasonable. I want to make a couple of comments. I don't take it lightly hearing from some folks about being mom-and-pop businesses. I don't have a problem with us finding a way to incentivize those that are not the big players, but I've had people come up and testify that there are industry players already making over $100 million. They said it, not me. So, we have to do something. So, again, I, I'm very open to both of these approaches. I think if I had it my way, if there was openness, and I'm just throwing it out there to get some feedback, is that what if we had an approach and called it 1, 2, 3? What if up until $10 million, you pay 1% if you're doing manufacturing? You hit $25 million, maybe you do 2%. Maybe if you hit past $50 million, you've got to do 2.5 or 3%. That's it. To me, that makes sense because it's going to incentivize somebody that's not going to make that much to still pay in and still have something, but it'd be reasonable. I still think there, and I'd love to see if there is any openness to, we've, some of us have agreed that dispensaries are carrying the bag here. Are we just, so that's fine. Is there any openness to lower that to 5%? Again, we've, we've asked them to pony up and take care of us and they've, they've saved our bacon over the last years. Thank you. So, is there any openness to that discussion? I don't know. Just throwing it out there.
So, now you've got a third proposal potentially on the table. So, again, this is a complex issue that, again, want to be fair, want to make a transition, want to try and balance the need that we have, but also with not being so aggressive that we do eventually shut down some of these opportunities for quality jobs. You know, I want to send the staff back with something to come back to us, even if it's all three ideas come back as pick one. I also know there's the opportunity that you can write a ballot measure that says, "Vote 1, 2, or 3," that you can write a complex ballot measure that says, "Vote for one of these three as part of this measure and the one that gets the most votes wins." And I hate to make it more complex because that's not something you usually like to do to your voting population, is to make it more complex. I personally don't think that changing the cultivation rate is something I'd like to see done. I think that's quite reasonable considering the surrounding communities and we don't have that many cultivation coming in. So, again, I, I'm looking at the distribution and manufacturing and trying to look at, for me, it's two different options because I have heard people advocate for a scale and that being, you know, a flat rate that's, that can be much higher than what we currently have and potentially be more fair. And then also to look at, you know, what is, what is a percentage rate across the board for manufacturing and distribution? I'm willing to talk about retail taxes, but I think that until we get agreement about manufacturing and distribution changes, we should hold off on changing the sales tax because they are carrying it right now and if we get no motion on manufacturing and distribution and only support for reducing the retail, then we've shot ourselves in the foot. So, that, that's my feedback on that one. Councilmember Cordova.
City Attorney, didn't we already, through majority of council, decide that we weren't going to touch the tax on the cannabis, on the retail side? Not what happened last time?
I think you made a council request last time to bring back this agenda item where we would discuss not touching the retail percentage and then maybe increasing the manufacturing and the distribution. That was your council request, but, you know, you can't make a decision in a council request, so we brought back this item for the council to decide what they'd like to do.
So again, I think holding off on talking about retail and what retail looks like is important until we've finished discussing what gross distribution and manufacturing change might be agreeable between at least three of us. And that's why I was asking for council to consider two different scales to be brought back to us as potential ballot measures. So I'm looking for a second on that and/or to take councilmember Cordova's and take a second on it.
But you said you're only looking for a 1% on manufacturing and distribution.
Um, I said a 1% on manufacturing and 1.5 on distribution.
I won't agree to that.
Okay. Did you agree to the scale? Looking at a scale?
I do agree to a scale. I think that is fair, looking at that, that would be fair. I would agree to a scale before I would agree to only 1%.
Okay. So we could make it a motion to bring back a scale? If I could get your second on that, and then we could have discussion?
Um, run it by me again, what the whole motion would be on the, on the scaled version?
So to bring back a scaled version, that leaves the below 2 million at 15,000, and then begin to look what the change should be above 2 million and in stages of 2 million, 5 million, 10 million, make it incremental so that it, on the smaller end, is assisting those small mom and pop businesses, but gets larger as you get into the tens of millions of dollars potentially being made by a very large organization.
I still think that, I mean, councilmember Ball started with his numbers exercise in the beginning. I still think that $15,000 is a low amount for a business that's making $2 million, but, you know.
So on gross, not on net, because we need to change that. Because right now, they're only paying it on net. And so they're able to pull out things like the cost of doing business and only pay it on net. Paying on gross changes it to less ability to deduct things from it. It becomes just whatever, all of the proceeds and no deductions being taken from that.
So I, I, and you wouldn't be touching the cultivation?
No.
You'd be leaving it at the 1%?
Yeah.
And we're still not doing anything with testing?
No, testing doesn't process enough cannabis to, to require them to pay any sort of tax on it. They literally are dealing with such minor amounts of cannabis that it's actually becomes burdensome to try and tax and track and process. And we only have two cultivation labs and you're not, historically, we're not going to see a lot of indoor cultivation here. They support our community in a different way because indoor cultivation is a huge use of electricity and water and pays into our utility rates very aggressively at a commercial industrial rate.
Okay, I could, I could back the tiered.
Tiered scale?
Mm-hmm.
For manufacturing and distribution?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor, can you explain that, just making sure I understand what you're?
So instead of switching to a percentage rate, go back to what we have right now, but instead of just leaving at below 2 million and over 2 million, go to a scale that then looks at under 2 million, over 2 million to 5 million, 5 million to 10 million, 10 million to 15 million, that sort of thing, or a bigger range. You guys can kind of play around with those ranges become and how aggressive we get as you make more at the larger scale.
So we're, so like right now, we're doing 15 or 30?
Right, and we just stop.
Right, but, so, you know, so, so if we do 2, and then we're doing 5, and then 10 and 15, what numbers are we talking about?
Can I, can I inject here since I kind of had the idea?
Sure.
So I think for what I'm thinking, again, play around with the numbers. Again, you've heard my, my speech at the beginning, but 15 and 30, let's cut that, I mean, come on. I mean, if somebody's up making $5 million, I mean, we're, we're already back to the point something. So for me, ideally, I think for me, for clarity, it wouldn't make sense to have a $15,000 fee and then a $30,000 fee and then switch to percentages. It would make sense to have percentages across the board, even if it's incremental changes. So I personally would be in favor of clarifying, and if it's, you know, up to $2 million, 2 to $5 million, it's that, whatever, even if it's a half of a percent, there's a great argument for incentivizing the smaller businesses. But once we get to 5, 10, 15, at my top, I'm looking at 3%. I think that's reasonable.
I guess that's what I was wondering, is it?
I'll be clear, $50 million and over, 3%. $25 million and over, 2.5%. $10 million or higher, 2%.
Is that, was that the mayor, is that what you were?
No, no, I was still looking at a flat fee structure for windows.
I was going to say, is this an alternate?
This is an alternate, and so I would say.
Well, I didn't understand that, because I, I think we're, I think we're missing the vote with the, the fee structure. I, I get it, but shouldn't it all be, even if it's 0.2% or something, do the math and then have it incrementally increase? That would make sense to me, but.
I, I absolutely respect that, and I get what you're trying to do, and that keeps you at your percentage rate, and, and, and I get it. What I'm saying is, out of respect for hearing what I've heard from the industry saying the flat fee, well, part of it is, we made the mistake and made it net, and it should be gross. So they're getting a huge tax break that's so low because we're doing it on net, so we need to correct the gross. So that's my first request. The reason I was doing a flat fee for the windows was I was looking at if we did 2% on 2 million, it's 50,000 per. So having over 2 million be still in the 30,000 range is within flexibility. Where we start to miss out is when it starts reaching the larger amounts. And so at 5 million, it was 125,000 per, based on gross. If you break out four businesses making 5 million or more at 2.5%. So I'm looking at what becomes a flat rate instead of saying, oh, well, at 5 million, you pay this, at 6 million, you're, you're going to pay this percentage rate. I was looking at a window that, yes, misses out on some of that incremental dollars, but keeps a flat rate structure. Does it have to be exactly this? No, and that's why I was asking staff to bring back an option that showed what a range might be between 5 and 10 million dollars. Does it have to be that between 5 and 10 million dollars, they pay 125,000 on gross? Maybe, maybe it's only 75,000. Let's look at the numbers that it's a flat rate, but I see your request, which could be a comparative scale of do it on percentage for that range. So we could have one that is a flat fee schedule structure, and you could have one that's a percentage rate schedule. And yes, one of them's going to be far more aggressive, because you're saying at 10 million, every, everybody under 10 million pays 1%. So that doesn't help the mom and pops, that doesn't help the small guys, because, you know, they're, they're probably going to be way above that 15 to.
Sure, but that's why I'm stating, I am, maybe it's just semantics a little bit, I am open to a less than 1% as long as it's just percentages, make it simple. Um, to me, that, you know, just, if you knew it's like, um, up to 5 million bucks, I'm going to pay a half a percent, whatever, just keep it simple, so it's not 15, 30, or 50 and 100,000, and then it's just, to me, it's, you should just know, it should be simple, it should just be a percentage. But again, I'm open and flexible, we've just got to get it right, get something through.
Okay.
But which takes it back to your original request, we could do both. If that's an amended, an amendment to Mayor Osborne's, you know.
Flat reschedule versus a percentage schedule and compare them.
Whatever we got to do to get it done, we're in an emergency.
Yeah, then he would be giving you a second with you agreeing, if you agree, to allow him to put in the.
Or you could second his amendment.
I will second his amendment.
All right. Hold on a second because we need to extend the meeting by at least 15 minutes. Do I have a second? All right, and we need to vote. And that passes 3-2. All right, so we have a proposal to bring back a flat fee schedule and bring back a percentage rate schedule.
Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, I'm sorry, I'm going to be incredibly nitpicky here, but because our council handbook requires a two-thirds vote to extend the meeting time.
Oh, it's failed!
You, you need to have four votes.
Okay, guys, look, really, you're going to end the meeting with no other discussions at 11:30 and shut everything down.
Well, you're not including me anyway, so we might as well go home.
Your light has not been on.
It has been on the whole time. Still on.
So I'm happy to yield the floor to you when your light is on.
I just think that, with all due respect, you guys are trying to hash this out, but it's, it's getting really late for us to be doing this, this, this kind of a serious discussion. And again, what kind of majority vote do we need on this, Jeff? Is it just a simple majority, or is it a super majority?
To extend the meeting?
No, I'm talking about to vote on any proposals here tonight.
To, to bring back, you know, a different ordinance, it's just a three. But to eventually put it on the ballot, it's going to need either four or five.
Yeah, I got you, man. Anyway, I don't mean to be disrespectful, it's just, we're getting late and we're not getting anything really finished here.
Can I make a quick suggestion? I, I feel the same way, and if you'd hang in there for just a couple of minutes, I promise I'll just sit on my hands and shut up.
Again, with all due respect, we want the public's participation. I'd love to have cannabis here also, you know, it's kind of like, we're going through this without having participation, and we've been here before where it's so late that we're alienating the public, you know, so, you know, anyway, that's my two cents.
So again, as the city attorney has said, we need four to vote in favor of extending the meeting for additional 15 minutes, and we had a motion on it, and the vote failed, so I'm going to ask you to revote and hope one of the two of you changes your mind to give us 15 minutes, and I will ask you to vote again. Thank you. So we will take this to 15 minutes. And so you have a proposal before you, it's been moved and seconded. Do you need any additional clarity?
Yes, I do, mayor. And I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
First of all, I think the easy questions are on page four of the staff report. We need to know just for sure that the council wants to adopt the language eliminating the tax on the tax. Is that part of the motion?
That is part of the motion.
Okay. And then you also want to include the amendment to allow the city's tax to be placed on the customer receipts?
Yes.
That's part of the motion as well?
Yes.
Okay. Then I must, it sounds like your motion is to leave the percentage for cultivation the same at 1?
Yes, yes.
And then the micro-business tax, currently, that's a cap of 6%. Is your motion to keep that the same?
Yes.
Okay. And then to keep the, no, keep the testing the same as it is right now?
Correct.
Okay. And then the last thing I'd mention is if council could decide on the, you've decided on the scales, I think, if you wanted to decide on the actual rates or flat fees within those scales tonight, then we could bring it back on the June 1st meeting, all teed up, for the council to vote to put it on a ballot. But if we do not bring it back on the June 1st meeting to vote to put it on a ballot, then we lose the opportunity to have the election on, in August of 2021. We, we missed that deadline. We'd have to go to November 2021, which would be pretty expensive, or May-June 2022 would be the next two options.
So if we don't discuss exact specifics, and you've been given, come back with these ranges and proposed ranges, and we make any changes that night, can we not still adopt that as the ballot measure?
Uh, you can, it's possible, but one of the things that has to be in the ballot question, on the ballot itself, the, the yes or no question, is an estimate of how much revenue the tax will bring into the city. So we need to have that question prepared for the council to vote to put it on the ballot. And in order to have that question prepared, we have to have the numerical estimate of the amount of revenue that it will bring into the city. So staff could have some idea and a few prepared for the next meeting to, to, to plug in to the blank.
I think that's a better solution than dragging this conversation out for another 15 minutes.
We will do our best.
And I thought that you had a set amount, and I thought Jeremy just proposed a set percentage amount.
But what he's saying is if we make any changes in the meeting, it might affect the question as it's proposed because of the way the question has to be submitted. So as long as we don't veer too far away that, from that, and it isn't too difficult to change that dollar amount, we'll be okay that night.
Got it, yes.
Okay.
Well, we'll do our best to get there, yes.
All right. So it's been moved, it's been seconded, we've had discussion, we've gotten clarification. Any other questions? Councilmember Cordova?
Oh, no, sorry.
Okay. Any other questions or clarity? Even though it's thick as mud. All right, let's vote. And that passes 3-2, and we'll come back to us for further discussion. All right. We have one agenda item left. Councilmember Starbuck.
I'm going to recuse I have real property within 500 feet.
Thank you. All right, the item is new lease agreement with Channel Islands YMCA for a term of 10 years with two five-year optional extensions for rent of $1 per year, and our, oh, our city attorney's going to make that presentation?
Yes, we're pulling an audible.
I volunteered him.
Got it, you, you delegated.
Yes, I am presenting the staff report on this item, and before we get started, I have to note for the record that councilmember Cordova is a board member of the YMCA, who is the entity that we're considering a lease with in this item. But in doing the legal analysis and advising councilmember Cordova, she does not have a conflict of interest or need to recuse herself on this item. Because she is not compensated and because of the terms of the way that the city acquired this property, the city is required to give consideration to YMCA for use of this property, preferred consideration. So for that reason, councilmember Cordova does not need to recuse herself on this item. What this item is, is a rewritten lease with the YMCA for the site that the city currently rents to the YMCA at 201 West College Avenue, and this is the Channel Islands YMCA. Currently, the city has a lease with YMCA that began in 1981 and is going to expire in February of 2028. The rent for, that the, the rent that the YMCA pays to the city is $568 per month at the moment. Last year during the pandemic, the council voted to waive the YMCA's rent for the, from the time period of the beginning of the pandemic to the end of the year that year. And that has been done, and we have refunded to the YMCA any rent that they paid in 2020 since the beginning of the pandemic. When we were going through that process, we realized that the lease that the YMCA was operating under was quite outdated, I would say, because it was still a lease with the county from when the county owned the land, before the county had granted the land to the city. So we found that it would be good to redraft that lease so that it is an official lease between the city and the YMCA instead of a lease with the county, and to update that part of it. And in the middle of that process, the city received a letter from the YMCA requesting to permanently reduce their rent to $1 per year, beginning in 2021. And the YMCA noted that the city does rent other properties to nonprofits for that amount of $1 per year. The YMCA's request letter is attached to the staff report for the council and the public to review. The YMCA also indicated that they would be interested in an extension to the lease. Currently, it's supposed to end in 2028. So what's being proposed is a new lease for a term of 10 years, starting in 2021, so that'll take it to 2031. And then the YMCA will have an option to extend for five, a five-year period, so that'll take it to 2036. And then the YMCA will have an option to extend for another five-year period, so that'll take it to 2041. And all of that will be at $1 per year as the city rents. And all of that will be at $1 per year as the city rents property to other nonprofits. One thing that will also change is that currently the city has the responsibility under the lease to maintain the landscaping surrounding the perimeter of the YMCA building. And in this new lease, the YMCA is going to be responsible for maintaining that landscaping and the city will not be responsible any longer. So that completes the staff report. The, I'm available for questions if the council has any questions.
Do we have any questions for staff? Seeing none, we will go to public comment. If you would like to comment on this, the number to call is 805-875-8201. If you'd like to speak on this item and you're in the room, you are welcome to come to the podium for your three minutes.
The volume is off, I'm sorry. Go ahead now.
Hi, my name is Marg O'Brien and I am the president and CEO of the Channel Islands YMCA, of which Lompoc is one of our seven branches. And we provide services through Santa Barbara and Ventura County. And the city council has a copy of the letter that we have prepared in front of them. But we did want to, I wanted to speak to our appreciation for the council for reducing our lease rate during the COVID pandemic. We have definitely had our challenges through the, the crisis, as many organizations have. We pivoted and provided a significant amount of support for the community, specifically partnering with Lompoc Unified School District and Lompoc Valley Medical Center. And those partnerships allowed us to offer low to no cost programs, to offer childcare and remote learning support, which I think is just key to the community. We also shifted and offered virtual and outdoor wellness. And we recently began to open up the facility to do some onsite wellness as the tiers have allowed us to do that. So another important thing that we are offering to the community through the facility at on college is to partner with the Youth Prevention Task Force to support gang prevention, specifically for kids ages in grades for three through six. So, you know, I think for over 44 years, we've been with the greater Lompoc Valley community and we appreciate the partnership with local organizations and with civic entities. We feel like we make the community a better place. We believe that everybody matters, that everyone counts and that everyone should have a chance to, to win and reach their God-given potential. And as a nonprofit charity in Lompoc Valley, as I said, we've been there for almost over 40 years, 44 years to be exact. And, and we just appreciate the continued support and we would ask for your support to lower our lease rate to $1 annually, which is similar to what other nonprofits are, are paying. And that will help us in our continued support for the community and to strengthen that long-term commitment for the, the Lompoc Valley. So we appreciate being here, we appreciate service and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead, we've got a call coming in, but go ahead. Thanks, Nick.
Good evening, you're live in the Lompoc City Council meeting. You have three minutes to give public comment. Please go ahead.
Hello, good evening again. This is Ashley Costa. Now I am speaking as the executive director of the Lompoc Valley Community Healthcare Organization. Thank you for considering this item. I just wanted to point out a few things. The Lompoc Family YMCA is one of the few Lompoc-based, Lompoc-serving nonprofits that specifically focused on our community and that's very rare. A lot of other agencies are countywide and don't have a Lompoc focus. So having an agency specific to Lompoc is a huge asset and it's something we definitely want to maintain. As you know, they provide needed services for youth, which is something that is lacking in our community, that there's currently discussions around how to grow services for youth, particularly due to prevention and intervention around crime prevention and violence. So they provide not only services for youth, but also subsidized services such as subsidized gym memberships for our community. So for those who can't afford a full gym membership, there are subsidized options, which is a great way to keep our community healthy, which of course supports the mission of my organization. I know that you're probably aware, both In Shape, as well as the gym that I owned, Best Coach, Strength and Conditioning, both closed due to the COVID pandemic. So they are going to be providing a service that's very critical to the health and wellbeing of our community moving forward. So this evening, I just wanted to say, I really hope that you consider this long-term agreement with YMCA and decreasing their monthly rent to that dollar. So thank you again for your consideration.
Thank you for that. So given that we are in the middle of public comment and we're not sure how much long it's going to take and we still need to conclude the meeting, I would ask for a 10-minute extension and get a second on it and then we need to vote.
I'll give you a second.
All right, and we need to vote. And this time we need three of us?
This one, you only need three.
Awesome. So let's vote. Oh, there's four, thank you so very much. All right, Nick, please go ahead, you're good? Okay, put the caller through. Did we have any written comments on these, Madam Clerk?
Good evening, you're live in the Lompoc City Council meeting. You have three minutes to provide public comment. Please go ahead.
Hello, good evening. Thank you for staying so late, Madam Mayor, esteemed council members. My name is Lucy Tomes Harrington. I've been a resident of Lompoc for over 40 years, me and my family. I'm currently on the Board of Managers for the Lompoc Family YMCA and have been for over 15 years. I'm a former board chair. I'm chair of the Finance Committee. I'm also on the Board of Directors for the Channel Islands YMCA, of which the Lompoc Family YMCA belongs. I'd like to add my voice of support and appreciation to our partners at the city for considering this proposal. It will enable community critical programs such as Wellness, the Live Strong Program, which is for cancer survivors, third grade Learn to Swim programs for drowning prevention, and the Horizons Program. I would like to spotlight that. This is a program for third, fourth, and fifth graders to provide them avenues of opportunities. These are youth that are being targeted for gang memberships as young as third grade. So wherever there's a need in the community, the Y steps forward and we appreciate the, the opportunity to continue the partnership. And this is a vital item that will enable us to continue to provide support to the community, to families, to youth, and to seniors to continue to strengthen our community, of which I am proud to be a part. So thank you for staying late, thank you for your service, and that concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Did we have any written communications?
Yes, ma'am. You received an email from Pat Brady, Bree Valla, Steve Popkin, and letters from Bruce Coggan, as well as a letter signed from Marg O'Brien and Tommy Spito.
Thank you for that. Seeing no one rise in the room, last chance. And no additional calls, we will close public comment on this and bring it back to council. Councilmember Ball.
I'll be super quick. I, I will never forget, it was last year, getting to know the workings of the YMCA and during probably some of the most stressful time for families that were looking for childcare. They stepped up in a tremendous way, worked with the school district, providing a lot of, of childcare and getting rid of some uncertainty for a lot of families in our community. They've always stepped up. I, I encourage them to continue to do so and to evolve and to blossom. Any way we can help, they did a tremendous job during some of our most stressful times.
So I'll go ahead and make the motion that we accept the new lease agreement with the Channel Islands YMCA based on staff recommendation.
Second.
And we have a second. Any other discussion or questions? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 4-0 with one abstention. Mr. Starbuck, you're welcome to come back. Did we have any additional written communications above and beyond what we've already discussed this evening?
No, ma'am, not.
Thank you. And we have a final oral communications for two minutes. So if there's an item you want to speak to that you missed out on or has occurred to you since the others, you're welcome to come forward. You have two minutes if you'd like to call in. It's 805-875-8201.
Five seconds. So I took the city survey with regard to the expenditure of the COVID funds. I found some issues with it. Rather than reading it, I'll just give it to you.
Thank you. Seeing no one calling in on our oral communications, we will close that and bring it back to council. Councilmember Vega reports, comments?
I have a.
Help for your mic, yes, please.
Thanks. Commissioners for the committees, now that we have them all open now, they've requested, especially my Public Safety Commissioner, with everything that's happening here in Lompoc, they'd like to meet monthly if they can. So my council request, I know we had a moratorium on letting them meet a quarterly, but I know for the public safety, they're concerned, you know, with the city and they want to be involved more. So they've asked that if they can meet monthly instead of quarterly or whatever we did the last time, you know? So my council request, if not for all of the committees, or maybe we have to do it for all of them, if the need be, can they meet monthly? Anyway, that's my council request.
I don't have any problem with the Public Safety Committee meeting more often.
Okay, I think it would be nice.
I'll give you the third on it when they get their business cards.
So that was a council decision that would have to be brought back as discussion for an update to the handbook again, wouldn't it?
Is that a council decision or do I have to extend the meeting?
I, I understand the request to be bring back an item to consider making the meetings of the Public Safety Commission more frequent.
And has the Public Safety Committee discussed this or is this just your request from a commissioner?
I think they've discussed it, but I know for sure they've asked because, you know, anyway, so I'm going to be the spokesman for them, how about that?
So I think we have a third, right? We have three?
Yeah, yeah, you have three.
So we'll bring back that discussion.
Right, if that's okay, I think it's a good cause, you know, they want to be involved and once a quarter, and then I have a second one here. I've had requests. You know, we have our committee and our commissions based on districts and I know you guys all voted this and you wanted it to be by districts. But I've had requests from people that live in Mission Hills and the village and they're asking how come they can't be involved, you know? I want to bring this up at least, whether you guys agree with me or not, it's fine. I promised them I would bring it up to make them at large because they, they think that as long as they live in the 93436 zip code, they'd like to help us move forward, you know? And there were some quality people out there that were, that spoke to me, you know, they were related to Vandenberg Air Force Base, they live in the village, they're 93436, they're Mission Hills, 93436. I'd like you guys at least to consider, I know that we kind of boxed it in with districts, but I don't see the negative in inviting more people to the table to help us move forward. So that's my council request.
To bring back an item to discuss those changes?
Yes. If I could, if we could bring it back to discuss and see if that's something you want to do. I know that we went by districts, but hey, we need more people. We need more people involved too. And I'd love to have some people from Vandenberg Air Force Base that live in the village and other people like that that could actually help us with, we need some more thoughts and ideas on our volunteer commissions.
You know, if we could hold that discussion at the same time we were to hold the one about the Public Safety Commission, this is a discussion that happened years ago with all the commissions. We went through it, you know, so it's.
Love to have a discussion with you guys and let's see where we go with it, okay? I know you boxed it in with districts, but I'm getting more and more people that are concerned and want to be involved since they do live here. So did that go through or what did we do?
You've only had two in support of that.
Only had two? Oh, you guys, you guys are staring at me. That's why you guys are staring at me, huh?
All right, Councilmember Cordova.
Mava.
All righty, Councilmember Starbuck.
No reports.
Councilmember Ball.
I have so much to report, but please call me tomorrow.
Thank you. I attended multiple workshops regarding the ARPA funds and please participate in the budget workshop on Thursday night at 6:30 PM. It will be the majority of discussion and that's a big issue is how can those funds be appropriately used? Attended several other meetings and represented the city at the Vandenberg Air Force Base's redesignation to Vandenberg Space Force Base. So we welcome that change. No other requests or comments, so we will adjourn the Lompoc City Council meeting until the next regular meeting at 6:30 PM on June 1st, 2021.